Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I call to order this regular meeting of the Carabel City Commission. It's Thursday, August 4th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. We're conducting this meeting in the Carabel City Hall chambers. And we'll open with a prayer by Commissioner Allen. He'll lead us in the prayer and then I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So please stand.
Our God in Father in Heaven, we're so grateful that we have this opportunity to come together as citizens to work on the things that would be beneficial for our community and for our citizens and for our city. Give us the wisdom and understanding that we might do that which will be right in your sight and would be best for our lovely city. We ask this in the name of your Son, Jesus, and our Savior. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with equal civil, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for silencing your phones. As I said before, anyone wishing to speak during our public comment section or during the discussion portion of an agenda item, you'll need to complete a speaker card and turn that into our city clerk or our city administrator. I do see a lot of people here this evening that I haven't seen for a long time. I'm glad to see you, Mr. David Advesting from the Appalachian Colored Times and other people, candidates that are running for city commissioner. We're glad to see you here. And we also have from the Appalachian Regional Planning Council representatives who are going to talk to us about a proposal here. And because of that, we didn't know till short notice that they were coming, and they're coming from Tallahassee. I would like to request an amended agenda and move their item, which is Item 6, under New Business, and move their item to the position of Item 3 under New Business. And that will allow them to get back to Tallahassee, and they won't be here late because this is a long, long agenda. So if we could amend that agenda to move Item 6 to the Item 3 position, and then all other items behind that would be pushed down on the agenda.
So moved.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Oh, everybody's second. I heard Commissioner Walden. So we have Commissioner Melander to motion to amend the agenda, move Item 6 to Item 3 position. And then Commissioner Walden, second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Okay, so you all will be Item 3. All right. So let's undertake the consent agenda, which includes the July 7th regular commission meeting, the July 12th special commission meeting minutes. We did not receive the attorney's invoices, but we may have a special meeting.
I sent them out this morning.
Oh, you did? Did everyone see the attorney's invoices? Did you? You did, Commissioner?
No.
Oh, okay. Wait, Will?
We can wait till next one.
Okay. All right. We have another meeting. So just the two meeting minutes. Did everyone have a chance to review that?
Motion to approve the consent agenda minus the attorney's invoices.
All right. Thank you. And that motion is by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Brown. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And that motion carries. All right. So next, we move to the public comment section. And this is where anyone can speak on anything that's on their mind. We won't take action on it. You have three minutes to speak for any item that's not on the agenda tonight. That was Commissioner Brown. So is there anyone that would like to speak under public comment? Okay. Please come forward and tell us your name for the record.
Jessica Luiz.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jessica Luiz. I'm a resident of Jordan Bayou neighborhood. I am here just to speak on the amount of hazardous things going on there, unlawful things going on there. We have electrical sockets that don't work. We have floors that are bubbling. We have insulation that is falling from the homes. No landscaping has been done. I found out that they got state funds and haven't done landscaping. So we have many smokers. So let's just say if a smoker throws a cigarette out, and this brush, and half these homes don't have fire extinguishers, what is the city going to do when the whole neighborhood burns down and nobody can do anything about it? I did bring a neighbor friend with me to also just verify that it is hazardous. She fell and hurt her leg, and she has a lawsuit against Jordan Bayou. And this is just the first one in six months. We've all just moved here in February. So what's next? Because I'm dealing with harassment, retaliation. I have someone saying I can have a pool, and then they call code enforcement on me? I don't understand what's going on and why no one is taking action. I've had my sign, Clean Jordan Bayou, taken off of Airport Road in 98 by the manager today. I had to call the police to get my sign back. She's going to do anything she can to try to run us out of there. And if anyone passes and sees my house, 335 Preservation Drive, I did take down the pool, by the way. I just want to let everyone know the pool is down. And never once did I want to try to not abide by any rule. I was told that I could have it. Didn't look like the city cared about anything. I mean, the grass is this high. So why isn't anything being done? And why am I in this position to feel like I have to be ran out of my home when I've never violated my lease? Never. And they sent out text messages to all the residents just to add things in the lease. Why? Your job as a management company is to amend the lease, make sure everybody is okay with what it is, and make it a safe environment for everyone, not just the people there, but the people that's going to come in. Because if we have all these problems now and the lease has not changed, then it's going to continue on. It's not going to stop. Even if I take down my pool or leave my pool up and add a fence, I've made it clear that they will not let me have this pool. Even if I abide by the city ordinance, they will make sure that they run me out and harass me again, even though I'm not breaking the lease. Nothing about a pool or fence in the lease. But yet, why?
Jessica, it's clear to see that you're upset.
I'm very, I'm very sorry.
I'm so sorry. It's sad that you have to come before the city commission. And I'm going to ask the attorney to help describe to everyone the situation that's there. But I want to make everyone understand that the city of Carabel is not the property manager of Jordan Bayou. I don't even know the name.
Is Grail Management?
Grail Management.
Correct.
And then this is a, even though it doesn't have a gate on it, it's what they call a gated community. It's a closed, it's a subdivision of its own, a closed subdivision.
Correct.
And it operates under covenances. And I've not really talked to the property management out there, but I know from other gated facilities and subdivisions, they have certain covenants, guidelines, homeowners associations, whatever, and they expect their tenants to abide by that. Whatever agreement is between the tenant and the property management, that's the agreement. And you have the agreement.
I do. And we are supposed to maintain our yards, but there's no legal to maintain.
I will ask Dan, then. Where does, and I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name.
Louis.
Louis.
L-E-U-I-S.
Okay, Ms. Louis.
So, yeah, I'll just, Ms. Louis, you know, obviously, as the mayor said, I hear you're upset. What I'm listening for, obviously as a city attorney, is which issues are private contractual matters between you and the management company, you and the owners of that property, and then what would fall under the city's purview, right? And I understand, like, this is a public forum during public comment, you can certainly say your piece.
Absolutely.
But the city can't help with all the items, right? On there. However, I mean, the one where, I guess, those roads are dedicated to the city, they're not. Those are private roads.
Private, right.
Okay. Then the vast majority of what you're describing is a private matter, right?
Including the grass.
The grass in common areas, possibly, but they're private roads. And so if there's a code enforcement, like a nuisance-type code enforcement, dangerous condition issue, then the city may be able to get involved in that, but that's it. I think of all the things you described, that was the only one that, because just as I guess.
Yeah, they didn't want to conform to our specifications, the roads, so they didn't need our, so they were.
Right. So they didn't dedicate them to us. So it's private property. But they asked you to do code enforcement on the pool?
They asked me to do the, well, the only issue, she didn't have to take the pool down as far as the city's concerned. She just had to have it gated and locked because the city code requires you to have a gate and a lock on it.
Safety.
So, or safety. So she didn't necessarily have to take the pool down, per se. That's between the landlord.
Correct.
So as far as any property owned out there by the association or landlord that's not in compliance with city code, then that would be a code compliance issue that you could bring to Keisha's attention.
Okay.
But beyond that, there's not.
No electrical, no one can come and inspect. And what about occupancy? Aren't there documents to say that these places are livable? Like, where are they?
There's a section of, and I don't want to get this wrong, I know I've dealt with a lot of it. There's a section in Florida statutes for residential tenancies, and it describes exactly what a landlord's responsibilities are for all those conditions that you described.
But the landlord isn't following their own contract.
But that's a contractual matter between you and the landlord. That's the thing. The city can't enforce that for you.
That's fine.
And then that would be something, maybe a civil case that she could take to a civil court?
Yes. And it's either Chapter 83 or 87, Florida statutes. Eighty-three. 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 So look at Chapter 83, Florida statutes.
So there's nothing that you guys can do to help us? Nothing?
What I just described, so.
That's it.
If there's, that is it from what you described?
As far as the certificates of occupancy, they hired an outside contractor. They did not use the city's inspections. They used an outside. But that's also protected under the Florida statute, so they had that right. Their inspection services signed off, CO'd the building, so that might be another avenue to go, you know, towards their inspection company because the city did not actually inspect those homes. That was a private inspector that Jordan Bayou hired.
And there's no way for me to find out. It's almost hard for me to find out who the owners are.
I mean, I can tell you who did the inspection services, but the city did not pass those under, you know.
Under you guys. Under, I understand. Yes, ma'am.
And so now that I'm understanding from Ms. Keisha and the attorney and you that it's all private property out there, it's private. So, you know, you say your sides of the roads, the grass is grown up. That is up to the property management to take care of that. And we can't, you know, since that's private property and those roads are not city roads, then we don't, you know, our crews would not come out there.
Okay, I understand. Even if they receive government funds?
The government funds would come from the state of Florida.
So I would need to contact the state of Florida. I need to contact someone. We need help.
We do need help. And we understand it. And I can't, I'm not an attorney. I can't tell you. I don't know. Maybe you want to try to contact the property owner.
Well, before they build more right down the road, you know, this one needs to be addressed. So, you guys, thank you very much.
Okay, and thank you. Thank you. Good luck. All right. Do we have other public comment? Okay. All right. Either one of you decide which one to come first. Come up to the podium and announce yourself.
I just want to add to Jessica's anyways. My name is Crystal Watts, W-A-T-T-S.
Okay.
And the first name's spelled like the glass.
Okay.
Sorry, I just get asked all the time. I'm a resident at Jordan Bayou, and yes, I do have a lawsuit against them. Within two weeks of me living there, there is a hole that is 12 and a half inches deep. I have pictures, and they knew about it. Well, they never come and get it cleaned up. I didn't know the hole was there because there's weeds over the hole. I fell in there, broke my leg in three places. I'm still dealing with issues because I have to have special wedges in my shoes now, and I'm going to have to have surgery on both feet because I've changed the gate of my walk. And they still won't come out and do nothing. They told me they don't have to do anything about it. Well, I've got splinters. My mother-in-law came over, went to use the handrail, and to come up the steps. Got a splinter this long in her hand. We had to dig out. Nothing is safe in there. The floors are all sagging. The windows shake. You can hear the people next door. It is just, it's a terrible mess. You can't open and shut your drawers without getting your fingers slammed because you've got to do this kind of a number. I'm with Jessica. We need something done. We need help from someone. And if y'all can't give it to us, we need to know who we can go to. Who's the next person up? Who are we supposed to be contacting when they tell us we have to abide by their lease, but they don't abide by their lease, and then they just raised our rent $50 apiece? There's no reason to raise rent in a government-funded. I'm on disability. We live on $1,100 a month, my husband and I. And now I got to pay $750 in rent. Where's the money coming for the rest of my stuff? They can't just up your rent on you and tell you, who cares if you're government-assisted? I went down there, talked to them. They told me, well, if you don't pay, we'll give you a three-day eviction notice. Now, how is that even correct? How is that right when you're on disability? They shouldn't be able to do that to us.
Well, Ms. Crystal, I hate to hear all of this. I'm sorry you all are going through this. Honestly, I do not know who to reach out to. And I know that evidently you're not able to afford an attorney. Maybe there's a public attorney that could help. Mr. Hartman, I just do not know what to tell these people. Honest to goodness, I've never had this situation before. I mean, they're.
The thing is, I mean, I have opinions. However, this is not the place to express this.
Yes.
From public officials, I mean, it is not, it is a contractual, you have a lease with a property owner, and I totally understand what you're saying because I've dealt with these things before as a private attorney and everything else, but you have a private attorney because you say you are in a lawsuit. I mean, that's who you should be talking to about this.
Yeah, but that's only an injury lawyer.
But they're a lawyer lawyer, so they should, they can certainly help you or get you to someone on these contractual issues as well.
Yeah, Mr. Hartman, would the Florida Housing Authority help these people? Is that an avenue they might be able to go to?
It may be, meaning the state, whatever state oversight is over this, which I'm not sure which agency is over.
Florida Housing Authority.
Could start there.
Yeah, start there.
Or HUD.
And that's what we were told, that it was HUD Housing, but then they turn around and say, oh, no, it's not. We don't want you calling HUD. And then they won't even give us the number to who owns the place or even the, I don't know, anybody. They won't give us any phone numbers. We have to search everything for ourselves. Or Jessica, I think she's been online probably at least a week's worth of time just trying to find out who the owners were. And it's just rough. And if you guys can't do anything, at least it's on record that we spoke about it and there is an issue out there that really does need to be taken care of.
Okay. Well, we thank you very much, and I'm sorry for your.
Okay.
Okay, then Ms. Sharon Glaze, please come to the podium and say your name in the microphone for the record.
Hello. My name is Sharon Glaze. I just want to add one more thing about Jordan, Jordan Bayou. They only have one entry door. So I understand that if you only have one entry door, then you should have a 36-inch window to escape from. Some of those houses, some of those houses have a lot of small children. And some of them are up on concrete blocks enough that if you throw a kid out that window, something bad is going to happen. So, I mean, it really, that really, is there no code enforcement that can be done as far as them making some sort of ladder system for the people that have the windows they'll need to be escaping out of?
Mr. Hartman, help me with this one, too. I think that as far as the fire safety of any home is governed by the Florida Fire Marshal's Office, and they might be able to give them some direction.
That's right.
And from what I can understand, the code does, it requires either the double entry or the window and a door, but it does not refer to anything being elevated and how you get out from there.
So it doesn't require any ladder system?
Doesn't require a ladder system.
Well, I mean, I would just like to point out again that my whole fight for four years has been over code enforcement, and if this is not the epitome of shoddiness to where you have small children that are going to be thrown out a window to escape a fire, then, you know, there's a real big problem there. Thank you all for your time.
And thank you. Thank you for your comment. Do we have any other public comment? Any other public comment, please? Okay, then we're going to move on to the commissioners' report. Commissioner Brown?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Commissioner Allen?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Walden?
Hi.
Okay. Commissioner Melander?
I have none.
Okay. Well, I have a report. I generally always do. And I'll try to make it quick. And I will say that I was unable to attend the July 7th commission meeting due to illness. And I was unable to officially announce the passing of Commissioner Frank Mathis. And his almost quarter of a decade of service to his electors and to the city of Carabel was very important to all. And over the past 11 years, I've served with Commissioner Mathis, and there was never a dull moment. You can be sure of that. He was very colorful. Commissioner Mathis was quick to always remind us that he was born in a sand pit. And Frank Mathis was all Carabel. His years of service will leave a lasting impression on the city operations. Commissioner Melander has requested a proclamation recognizing Commissioner Mathis's services, which will be read later at tonight's meeting. And also, on the July 7th meeting, I missed Commissioner Walden taking his oath. And I hate that. On June 21st, this board requested Mr. Walden to fill in Commissioner Mathis's vacant seat. And at that time, Commissioner Walden was already uncontested for a two-year term beginning on November the 3rd. And Mr. Walden accepted this board's request, and he was appointed to fill the vacant seat until his regular seat begins on November the 3rd. And so now I want to officially welcome Commissioner Walden to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm proud to serve with you again. We served together for five years from 2015 to 2020. And then next, I want to thank Commissioner Melander for filling in for me last month by presiding over the July 7th meeting. He did a fine job. I watched it on Forgotten Coast video. And thank you for signing city checks for two consecutive Mondays. That's one of the mayor's duties is to sign payment and payroll checks every Monday. So finally, I want to advise the public and the commissioners that Florida Rural Water Association is currently conducting a water and sewer rate study, and the results should be available within the next month or so. It's been several years since the last rate study was conducted for the city of Carabel's Water and Sewer Enterprise, so it would be interesting to learn their recommendations. And that's all I have. Thank you for listening, and I will turn this over to our city administrator. Excuse me, our city attorney. He's next.
And I have none.
Okay. You have none? All right. Then how about the city administrator?
Okay. Did you all receive your department reports? I know our water and sewer report came out late, so it didn't come out until this afternoon. Do you all have any questions? I just want to report to you all that Harry's Bar owner has signed the sidewalk encroachment agreement, and they should be getting their fencing, the black fencing that we showed the pictures of, that should be coming in probably within a week or so. We need to schedule a general fund water and sewer workshop, budget workshop. I was looking at the 22nd, if that's good with everyone, or do y'all have another date? This shall apply.
August 22nd.
August 22nd is on a Monday.
On a Monday. How is that for you, Ms. Keisha?
I always try to avoid Mondays because it's crazy trying to get workshops on Monday, but if that's the only day for everybody, that's fine for me.
What if we do it later in the day?
I would need to do it 4:30 or later.
If you'll need another day, that's fine. I know that we were doing some staff meetings the week prior to that to get ready, so I can't really do it before the 22nd.
If it's during the day, I'll be free on Tuesdays or Wednesdays, or anytime after 4:00.
Well, how late do you all want to work on the budget? I mean, this one will be, we'll be looking at the, now, we'll have already worked on the CRA budget, but we'll, we don't need to review the CRA budget. We'll be reviewing the airport water and sewer general fund. And the CRA, we will have already done, completed that. The airport will be already pretty much done and reviewed by Courtney and be presented by Courtney, so that one won't require the work like water and sewer in the general fund. We could go on the 23rd. Can you go on Tuesday, on the 23rd?
Tuesday.
Okay. 23rd, like in the morning at 10 o'clock or 1:30 in the afternoon? Okay. Well, how about let's go at 10 o'clock and if it seems like we need more time, we'll take a lunch break and come back. 23rd.
What time?
10:00.
And then, so leave your date clear, and if we need more time, we'll take a lunch break and come back.
At 10?
10 o'clock, August 23rd. So what we need is, you need a motion for that?
Yes. I'll make a motion that we have the water sewer budget workshop on Tuesday, August 23rd at 10:00.
In general.
In general?
Yes.
In general.
And, okay, that motion is back from Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Allen. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? I'm sure it carries. All right. Is there anything else, Ms. Courtney?
None.
Okay. Do y'all have questions for Ms. Courtney? Okay, and I do have one, and I've asked you this in your office, but I just want to know so that the attorney knows. Has Harry's Bar, they signed their encroachment sidewalk?
Yes. We're still waiting on their insurance information that they have signed their encroachment agreement.
Okay, and that's an agreement for 10 months? All right. Okay.
So we did it?
Yes, 10 months. And we look forward to seeing their insurance coverage where they're covering the city as well. All right. Ms. Keisha, city clerk report.
I've got some meeting dates that I want to announce. August the 16th, as we just discussed, is our CRA budget workshop at 10:00 AM. August 16th, that same day, at 1:30 PM is our regular CRA meeting. August the 18th, at 2:00 PM is our planning and zoning meeting.
August 18th?
August 18th. August 23rd, as we just talked about, is going to be our budget workshop at 10:00 AM. Our next commission meeting at September 1st at 6:00 PM. And are tentatively looking, well, I have certified the date for our budget workshop. Our first budget workshop is going to be September the 14th. Initially told some of y'all the 15th, but the county or the school board has that date. We can't use the same day. That's going to be at 5:01, September 14th. And then the final budget hearing will be tentatively, but I'm pretty sure because of the calendar, you know how very specific that is. So it'll be the 27th at 5:01, September 27th. That will be our final budget hearing.
Okay. And then earlier, you said the 14th would be workshop, but you meant first budget hearing?
First budget hearing, yes.
First budget hearing at 5:01 on 14th, and the second budget hearing final on the 27th at 5:01 p.m. Do we have any questions for Ms. Keisha? Okay, well, thank you very much then, and we'll move on to the Anovia report.
Thank you. I have a brief report tonight on our DOT Small Communities Outreach project on Ninth Street. The paving for that roadway is complete. They did encounter some erosion issues there with the rain we've gotten recently. So they've made some repairs, and it appears to me that the sod is beginning, beginning to hold better. So we'll keep her on that. The other paving projects, I've, I do have a call into North Florida Asphalt to find out when they're mobilizing. They were supposed to mobilize about a week or so ago, and they haven't yet. And I'm, I'm sure they've been delayed with the rain also. But I think we can expect those other paving projects to begin directly as soon as I find out a mobilization date, I'll let Keisha know. Courtney, yeah? On our lighthouse project, water and sewer, that project is progressing well. On our Marine Street CBG project, still waiting for the environmental approval. Our summer camp project, we, we had a workshop on that prior to this meeting today. Lastly, the new Carabel Cemetery. I see we have an agenda item on that, so we'll discuss it that time.
I'll be helping that report.
Yes, thank you.
Me too.
Thank you.
And all of us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Do we have questions for Russell? All right. And my, my main question was, when was North Florida going to be mobilizing for our other nine small projects in the CRA district and the city project? So as long as, we're anxious for them to get done, but as long as they're done by, we want to be able to have this done and completed, the invoicing in fiscal year.
Okay, understood, yes.
But we really don't want to wait that long.
Understand.
Okay.
That's not far away.
I know it's not far away. Okay. All right, then, thank you.
Thank you.
And then we'll move to the advisory board reports. We have the Carabel Waterfront Partnership. Did you have anything, Ms. Tammer? I, I will announce for you that they have the waterfront, they have their cleanup, I'm sorry, September the 17th, right? Their intercoastal waterfront cleanup is on September 17th. You meet at 8:00?
8:00.
Okay.
That'd come.
All right. Thank you very much. And then the elevator grant, that complete proj, that project has to be completed by June the 30th of 2023?
Yes.
Okay. The whole project?
We have exactly.
All right, all right. Thank you. Thank you for your volunteer service. All right, then, we'll move to the Carabel Aviation Advisory Board. Mr. Sullivan, did you have anything in particular that you need to?
Uh, no, just to make sure everybody understands the resolution tonight.
Okay. And that you have described in there that the original resolution called for the description of the project to change, but it did not include the money transfer. And tonight's resolution calls for the money from the first project to be transferred to the new project. This is an FDOT resolution that they, that they wrote and submitted. Okay. All right. And all of these reports, the department reports and these advisory board reports are available from the clerk's office if you want to see these in hard copy.
And I did have a question for Mr. Sullivan.
Okay.
Did you want to appoint a new member tonight?
Yes, we could.
We had a vacancy on our airport advisory board, and we did advertise for people to submit requests that wanted to be a member of that board, and we received one.
We received one as Bruce Graham. He's been attending some of our meetings. He's AOPA representative and a task team, as FAA safety program representative, and he's the only one that's submitted, so we'd like to appoint him to replace Sam Eads.
What was the last name?
Graham, Bruce Graham.
G R A H A M. And Bruce. And Sam Eads moved back to Georgia, and so they're looking to have, you've advertised as, as you've always done, and you have Mr. Graham, which you all have made because he does attend your meetings.
Yes.
So do we want to entertain this appointment?
I motion to approve Mr. Sullivan's recommendation to the board.
I'll second.
All right. Do we have any other discussion? Okay, so Commissioner Melander has motioned to approve Mr. Sullivan's recommendation for Bruce Graham as the new Carabel Aviation Advisory Board member, and that's seconded by Commissioner Brown. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your volunteer service. And then do we have any, did the Carabel Lighthouse Association submit a, a report?
No.
Okay. And then last month, I believe I saw in the video that they wanted, you have requested a memo of understanding with them, that Mr. Hartman was going to complete that regarding?
We haven't done that yet.
And I would suggest in that memo that, that they get their, they're going to apply for a grant, infrastructure grant from the TDC. And that has to be approved before they can start any, any, any work on that project. I would request that they get that approved first before the city fronts money for any of their, their work. And we want to see that, you know, well, it's a verbal approval. They don't have, you know, they don't have written approvals, but we'll get Mr. John Solomon to, to write something, and we'll have an agreement. And I think they're asking, at the TDC, they're asking for these projects to be completed by the fiscal year.
So I'll, I'll make sure that they do that.
Okay. All right.
Ms. Tammer can make sure that they do that.
I wrote that down.
Is there June or?
Their fiscal year is the same as ours, September, so I'm not sure how that's working. All right. I think lighthouse grant, but this is, this is on the TDC's budget again next year, these infrastructure grants. All right. Any, anything else then? Okay, we'll move on to public hearing, and we have Resolution 032022. And Mr. Hartman, would you read that for us?
Sure. So this City of Carabel Resolution 02-2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a change in description to a public transportation grant agreement, project number 425610-4, with the Florida Department of Transportation provide 100% grant funding from, from Carabel Thompson Airport Stormwater Upgrades by Parallel Drain project to the environmental permitting and mitigation for taxiway and hangar development. Whereas the City of Carabel agrees to change the description of the project, number 425610-4, from the Carabel Thompson Airport Stormwater Upgrades by Parallel Drain, environmental permitting and mitigation for taxiway and hangar development. Whereas the City of Carabel needs 100% grant funding to mitigate the wetlands present on the site in order to initiate site work of the new taxiway and hangar facilities. Whereas the Carabel City Commission wishes to take advantage of the generous offer of the Florida Department of Transportation to provide 100% of the funding to make these needed improvements to the Carabel Thompson Airport, now therefore be it resolved by the City Commission.
That's the wrong one.
That's the old one.
I'm going to send it to you, so, sorry.
Okay. So Dan will be able to read it tonight.
Yes, I'm sending it to him now. I just, I just was trying.
He says zero two, mine says zero three.
Yeah, I know. Sorry about that. That was my fault. That was my fault.
I got a little more left there.
Well, thank you for catching it.
What do you have? You need to earn your money.
All right.
If y'all want to do the, the ordinance until that comes to, to him, or proclamation, and then come back to that.
Okay. All right, so what we have next then is the proclamation requested by Commissioner Melander, and, and Ms. Courtney wrote it, and so since Ms. Courtney wrote this proclamation, I've asked her to read it.
Not as fast as Dan. Proclamation 012022, a proclamation of appreciation acknowledging the service of Carabel City Commissioner Franklin Mathis. Whereas the City of Carabel was fortunate to have a dedicated commissioner, Franklin Mathis, who served the citizens of Carabel as commissioner for a period of nearly 25 years. And whereas during nearly quarter of century of service to the City of Carabel, Franklin Mathis successfully and effectively performed duties required of him. He demonstrated commitment and service to the people of Carabel. And whereas we, the City Commission of the City of Carabel, wish to extend our utmost appreciation for service that Franklin Mathis did to make our city a better place. Whereas Commissioner Franklin Mathis passed away on June 7, 2022, while continuing to serve the citizens of Carabel, and now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Commission of the City of Carabel does hereby publicly acknowledge and recognize Franklin Mathis for nearly a quarter century of dedicated and diligent service to the citizens of Carabel, adopted by the City Commission of the City of Carabel, Florida on this fourth day of August 2022.
That's very nice. Thank you.
That is fantastic.
And we don't take action on a proclamation, I don't believe. Okay. But did you have a place on there for us to sign?
I have a place for all of the commissioners to sign.
They asked for it.
All right, okay. Well, thank you, Courtney, and thank you for writing that. Thank you for thinking of asking for a proclamation. Okay, then, we'll move back to the Resolution 032022.
All right, let me give another shot. City of Carabel Resolution 03-2022 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a transfer of funding of a public transportation grant agreement from project 425610-4, design stormwater upgrades for parallel drain, to 423905-5, environmental design and site work for taxiways and hangars with the Florida Department of Transportation provide 100% grant funding. Whereas the City of Carabel agrees to move fiscal year 23, 2023 funds in the amount of $100,000 for project 425610-4, design stormwater upgrades by parallel drain, to 423905-5, environmental design and site work for taxiways and hangars. Whereas the City of Carabel needs 100% grant funding to mitigate the wetlands present on site in order to initiate site work of the new taxiway and hangar facilities. Whereas the Carabel City Commission wishes to take advantage of the generous offer of the Florida Department of Transportation, provide 100% of the funding to make these needed improvements to the Carabel Thompson Airport, now therefore be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Carabel, Florida, assembled in regular meeting on July 7, 2022, that the mayor be, and she is hereby authorized and directed, to negotiate and execute a public transportation grant agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation. A document necessary to receive funding from the Florida Department of Transportation is follows. Florida Department of Transportation participation 100%, $100,000. City of Carabel participation 0%, $0. Total project cost $100,000. Be it further resolved, that a copy of this resolution be attached to the public transportation grant agreement in the City of Carabel, and the Florida Department of Transportation when fully executed.
All right, then, and we've had an explanation on this from Mr. Sullivan's report, and do we have any questions, or we want to entertain a motion on this one?
Motion to approve Resolution 032022, as read by the attorney.
All right.
Second.
Okay. All right, that motion then to approve this resolution is by Commissioner Melander, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? And that motion carries. And we have one more, and this is a first reading only, so there will be no action on this. And Mr. Hartman, would you read this first reading of this ordinance, 486?
Sure. This is ordinance 486. It's an ordinance to the City of Carabel amending and modifying the terms and conditions of ordinance 328, also known as the Sunset Island Yacht Club ordinance, providing for additional permitted uses of the property, repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith to the extent of such conflict and establishing effective date. And this ordinance simply allows for lot owners of adjacent lots to build a, essentially a duplex structure on the center of the two lots, and basically combine lots and do two units on those combined lots.
Okay. And, and I will ask, we can ask, we're not taking public comment, I mean, we're not taking action on this right now, but I would like to ask at the, this, this went to the P and Z group?
Yes, this went to P and Z. It was, no, I'm sorry. You think it went to P and Z?
Yes.
It went to P and Z. It was twice. Twice. It recommended approval. And, and it was, we received a letter basically from the homeowners association that basically was approval of the concept, at least for the city, to move ahead with the ordinance amendment.
So you have heard from the majority of the property?
We have a bunch of them sitting there, right over here.
I, I have the letter from the homeowners association, but I did just today, and here's the letter.
Okay, and I'm just wanting to make sure that this is something that the homeowners association wants, that the majority of the people.
Mr. Scott, do you want to come up?
Do you want me to read the letter?
Yeah, that'd be fine. Read the letter.
Please let this letter serve as written confirmation that the Board of Directors of Sunset Island, Carabel, Florida has been directed by unanimous vote of the homeowners present at a duly called meeting to pursue their ability to construct single-family attached residential structures in the form of a duplex on two adjoining lots. Any duplex constructed must be located on contiguous lots in a shared property land. And that was signed by Scott Groh, the president.
Okay. And please let the record show, since we can't see them, they're in the audience, but a fairly large group is in the audience from the homeowners association, all nodding their head, yes. Is that correct?
I do have to add that I did get a, an email today from a Mike Murphy that is, he is opposed, so I had to let him know that I would let y'all know that.
Yes, and is Mr. Murphy a property owner out there?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think he owns a pirate plant.
All right. I, I just come in through the website, so I just. I think he received the letter in the beginning, and it was sent out as a special exception, and so the letters were sent out 250 feet, like we normally do. So I believe he got one of those letters. Okay.
I think I did speak with him. We know, we call him Murph, and I think I spoke with him, and he didn't understand the situation.
I, I was trying to explain to him, because he keeps calling it rezoning, and I, you know, it's not a rezoning, so.
All right. Okay, well, we can't take action. We'll have this on next month's agenda where we will take action, but I appreciate all the information that you all have provided us. All right, then, we'll move on to our quasi judicial hearing, and I will now convene our quasi judicial hearing. And the item one, the only item under this portion of the meeting, is to approve or disapprove the final site plan for 1,001 Gray Avenue, which is New River Landing, which is going to be constructed at the old City Hall site. Okay. All right. I'm just waiting for them, they're kind of discussing back there. Thank you, Chief. Okay, so did everyone hear that item, or do I need to read that again? We have that item. And I just need to say briefly that we approved the preliminary site plan on September the 3rd, 2020. And at the late July of 2021, the developer contacted myself and Ms. Keisha, and he said that due to skyrocketing prices, that construction costs, that he was, he would like to propose a two or three-story unit garden-style apartments instead of single-family buildings. And he was told that he would need to bring that to the commission, and that it could be possibly rezoning, and that would be, the, the city attorney would have to decide that. And it looked like at one point he was going, we were going to, on September the 2nd, 2021, approve an extension of the purchase-sales agreement, which we did. But he was at that time going to come and present and bring all of this information to the commission, but he said remove that, that portion of his presentation from the agenda, so that was never brought forward. But I just wanted to let you know that, that that did happen back in July of 2021. And so today, we have, of course, approved, disapproved of this final site plan for 1,001 Gray Avenue. And I believe that you had some recommendations contingency, or conditions, excuse me.
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
We're recommending approval with the conditions being receipt of permits from the Water Management District and DEP for stormwater and water and sewer. Russell, otherwise, otherwise, this final site plan meets all the city's code criteria? Yes, it does.
And just add that we will not be taking over them roads either. Is this going to be, is this a private so-called gated subdivision?
It is a private subdivision. Let me correct that. It's, it's a private development. There is no subdivision occurring.
Nothing's been subdivided. It will be one big. A private development.
Yes.
Excuse me, private development. All conditions are met. Otherwise, that you said, otherwise, that you want to see their permits from the Northwest Barter Water Management District and from the DEP for stormwater and water and sewer before this, if we were to approve this final site plan, before the approval really is adopted, you need to see.
That's correct.
All of this information. All of this information. Otherwise, everything else is in order?
Yes.
And this is a private development.
Right.
It was recommended unanimous, unanimously through P&amp;Z.
All right. Does everyone understand that? Do we have questions?
I was just hesitating. Yeah, I do, but not.
Okay, so if we, I can't say, you know, we haven't approved it or disapproved it, but if we, it's hard to talk when you can't talk.
I will add that we did go back after the last Jordan Bayou and changed our resolution, our fees, so that chances are they will have to use our inspector unless they just want to pay outrageous fees to get around that. So, because they will be still paying the city 70% of the fees regardless if they use us or not. So hopefully that'll deter them from using the other company that they use last time.
I would, I would just like to see the, see them come before us and just to have some discussion, not necessarily for them to meet all the requirements that they have thus far met, that our clerk has said that they met, just some general discussion about the future. Anyway, and I won't go any further than that tonight, but that's, that's just my opinion. But if we need to move forward, and I do agree with P&amp;Z from what I've looked at and what our city clerk and building official has said, what we've done over the last times a year or so that the mayor has described, or better, I will make a motion that we approve with.
Commissioner Melander, sorry. If there is any public input, we would take that at this time before taking action on it.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, public input before, before y'all take action.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I, is there any other, is there any other condition that we can, we can put, or do, I mean, Commissioner Melander has asked to see, have the developer present, I mean, is that something we can request, or is that, am I asking that question?
We can request it, but we can't necessarily make it a condition of site plan approval.
Okay.
The conditions for site plan approval are laid out in the code, and that's, obviously you all can review everything and ask questions of staff, applicant, public, that sort of thing, but obviously we have to rely on our very competent engineer here. He has said that it meets, the site plan meets the code criteria.
The site plan meets the code criteria.
Yeah, basically, as mayor, that's what I was trying to convey, is I don't, I don't want to question any of their legality, but I would like to have some, if you will, interaction, some discussion and talk about the future, and that's it.
Though we can't make that a condition of.
That's, that's correct. That's correct, yes.
It's so hard to ask a question when, when we don't know what we can ask.
Well, I guess basically what I want to do is.
Well, there's the site plan related.
You can ask any question you want about the site plan.
Site plan, okay. As far as the construction and that's, the site plan. Then, okay, let me ask the public. Does the public have comment on this at this time? Yes, yes, say your name, please, sir.
Vance, Vance Peter. My only question. The city's not taking control of the road because they're not being made, they're not being built into the specifications the city wants. Can that, is that something that the city can require them to do? If not, you're going to get another road in the middle of Carabel that you cannot code-enforce or you cannot enforce anything down because it is a private road. So they'll build it, yeah, subdivision, but it's not because it's all on one lot, so they get past the lot size limits and a whole other lot of things, which is going to give the city a whole lot less that they can do if problems occur. Thank you.
Can that be a condition, that they go back and build the roads to specifications and that the city would accept those roads?
In order to do that, we would have to define the roadway, and that would involve a subdivision at that point, because the road would have to be dedicated to the city, so that would require a subdivision, which changes the nature of the application.
Think of this, and this is a little bit confusing, because it looks like a subdivision, right? You have individual homes spaced out on, I guess, dimensional lots out there, but it's not being subdivided into lots. It's more like a, I'm thinking of bigger cities, but where you have a sprawling apartment complex or a sprawling bunch of townhomes that are, and once you pull into that parking lot, even though there's internal roads, they're all private. They're all the responsibility of the, and we've heard some complaints about, but the management company, the owner of the land. So that's, and those, those do not need to be, they need to be minimum requirements in our code, but not the same requirements of like DOT and the roads that we would, we would accept and then start maintaining ourselves. We're not in charge with any maintenance, therefore they have the option of building them to still our standards, but they're not road-worthy standards.
Yeah, I was going to make, thank you, I was going to make that point as well, that the pavement section is similar to the City of Carabel's requirement. So there is compaction requirement on the subgrade and the base and asphalt and all that's specified in the plans currently. The only difference is that the maintenance is up to the property owner. They had, they did approach the city early on, actually, to, to take over ownership of the roadways, and the city opted to not do that.
You know, how much I, I just, I don't know what has been discussed in public comment, if there's an issue, don't know if it's with the developer or if it's with the management company, you know. We don't know these, I mean, there could be, there's things going on, and we don't know what's causing whatever's going on out there at Jordan Bayou.
Looking at me, but the site plan, so we're at the site plan stage, and so that's what you have before you have to make a decision on.
And the site plan, as Mr. Russell says, meets all of the land development codes, it's all in order, but before we would allow it to be fully adopted, that the city would need to be in receipt of the permits from the Water Management District and from the DEP for stormwater permits and water and sewer permits.
And Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, they don't have to approve it with conditions. They can wait till they come back, they actually, if they just need more time.
Well, again.
Because they don't have everything.
Well, I sort of defer to Russell on this, but site plan, I mean, I think, I mean, are you saying we did not tabling it?
And a table on it until they do get their permits.
I mean, that, that is, that is on the list of things they must have for certain. Yeah, sometimes that could come.
It is, and this would be a question back to Dan, I think. If, I mean, if that's action from the board, is, does that establish a precedent now? I mean, I know.
Well, that's the only thing is we typically do.
Approval with condition is common. So if they don't do it in this case, does that cause an issue? That's just a question.
Well, and, going back and forth here, talking before the meeting is, receipt of those permits, I mean, we have further stages where they get construction plans, they get, you know, these different things. Are those permits, you know, if our approval is conditioned upon receipt of those permits, then they cannot afford until they get those permits?
That's right.
And they certainly can't afford with construction or anything. I mean, Keisha would not, you know, the building official would not permit them to begin construction without demonstrating they got water, sewer, stormwater, that sort of thing. So I'm thinking of a recent case, but the, you know, we're looking at the stormwater design. Have they submitted stormwater design?
Yes.
Okay, and you've looked at that, and that meets the criteria. So I think, I think your recommendation is the appropriate one, that it's approval, approval conditioned upon receipt of those permits, so they're not receiving just a blanket approval tonight, they have to get those permits. But again, you're saying you don't see a reason they wouldn't get them, they're just, they performed the design, the design complies with our code, and it's a matter of processing through the state at this point, so.
And so for those that I see like questioning, you know, faces and all, that don't understand why we seem like we're not speaking and talking like we have in the other agenda items, is that this is quasi-judicial, and we really can't say what we think or what our opinion is until a motion and a second has been made. Then during discussion in a quasi-judicial situation, then we can say or ask more in-depth questions or say what our opinion is. So we're just kind of in limbo. We, we have to weigh all of the credible substantial evidence that is brought forth from our professional engineer and, and city attorney. They tell us what they recommend and what the planning and zoning recommended, and then we can only use that information regarding the site plan. We can't take subjective information or, you know, opinionated type information that's not related to the site plan to make this decision. Yes, ma'am, please come forward. And that's all got outlined by Florida statute, so we're doing the best we can. I'm not going to pretend I know anything, because I don't know anything, but my question is, I mean, you're talking about like doing it with conditions or without conditions, but we're all like little children, so if you don't include the conditions in there, then, and you go ahead and approve it without the conditions, what if they don't meet the conditions that you're expecting them to meet because they're adults?
They, they will, they can't, Mr. Hartman has just explained that if they do not provide these permits that is required by law, they cannot move forward.
Okay.
It's a iffy thing, because we see the condition of everything on the roads now. It's a scary thing.
Well, they won't be given building permits if they don't have these, these items. Is that correct? They can't, they can't get a building permit.
Thank you.
That's correct. They don't get to start construction.
With no development order until they have all of this that's being required.
I get to be the bad guy.
It's.
All right. So do we want to, are we, are we wanting to make a motion, or we would like to table this for further consideration? I beg your pardon?
Do we want a motion on it? Is there any more information we need to be in?
I, I don't know of any other information regarding the site plan. It was, it was sent out to all of us to review. We had the opportunity to ask questions of staff. We've seen this, we've looked at the preliminary site plan, it looked pretty much the same as this. We've seen this, it's been brought to us, I think it's been ongoing since 2019. It was, you've already approved the preliminary, I believe, Mr. Green, so.
I don't, I don't know what we would gain by tabling it, and I've already said I do have some, and I'm going to go ahead and make a motion when we can have a discussion, ma'am. I'm going to make a motion that we approve with conditions that our engineer has described that has to be met.
One second.
Okay, so that motion is by Commissioner Melander to approve with the conditions outlined by the city engineer, second by Commissioner Brown. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The only thing I can say is, is the way I want to put it, and I hope I do it right, especially after I've heard public input tonight, I would like to convey, if you will, some concerns to the builder, landowner, and that's the reason why I was just asking, we can't demand anything, but we can have some, if you will, communications, two-way communications with them and ask them to come and see us, and where we can share concerns, and I'm assuming, Mr. Attorney, you looking at me, that's legal for us to do that?
Yes.
Okay. And that's all ahead, ma'am.
All right. I don't know, Mr. Hartman, should we, once we take care of this motion, maybe have a motion where we direct you to contact the developer, landowner, and request that he and his representatives come and meet with us? We'll have an agenda item so we can express our concerns, or?
You can certainly request that, yes.
Certainly request it, okay.
You, yeah, I mean, obviously you can just direct me. I can contact, I'll go through my contacts, I can contact the developer, I can tell him that, I can tell him about the public comment issues and the issues that were raised, and that it would be a good idea for him to come and, or somehow attend electronically or personally and, and address that.
All right. All right, so we have, we're still in discussion. Is there any public discussion on this motion? All right, are we ready to vote then? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, and then that motion carries, and that's to approve with, with the conditions outlined by Mr. Marge. And so then, what, what I believe that we're agreeing in principle, unless someone wants to make a motion, that we're going to direct Mr. Hartman to contact the owner developer and ask him to make arrangements that, at all possible, to be on our September agenda to come experience this in person or electronically so that we can express some of our, our concerns, and that the public might have an opportunity to civilly express their concerns as well. Okay?
Very good.
All right, we agree in principle to direct, okay then?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much, and there are no further items on this quasi-judicial hearing, so that is adjourned. Guess what? We moved to new business, and it's a presentation of our September 30, 2021, financial statements from James Moore Accounting Firm, and we have Mr. Mark Payne. It's always a pleasure to see you. He's going to tell us about our finances here for the fiscal year of 2021.
Good to see everyone. Also have Chris Salick, the manager, on your job this last year. I'll be short and I'll be brief, and everybody's got a lot to do. You guys got your audit, we actually have two audits before you, hopefully, Keisha.
Does anybody need it?
I'm going to go over real highlight stuff, if I may. If that's, we'll go through this, we can hear the rest of the line.
But be sure to tell me the page number, you know.
I will, sure, I will.
I've got mine highlighted as well.
Absolutely. So I think the biggest thing is on page one and page two of the independent auditor's report for the City of Carabel for September 30, 2021. Basically, this report says these financial statements are materially correct. It also states that the financial statements is the council's responsibility. My responsibility is to express an opinion on your financial statements. That's kind of what the report says, in a nutshell. Everything's fairly stated. I think the things to highlight would be on.
I think the things to highlight would be on page 11, which is the statement of position, which basically lists all the assets, all the liabilities and residual equity for the city for the year end. At the end of the day, you had, and I mean, I'm going to use rounded numbers because, so we ended, total assets $53 million. Total equity position for this, for the city is right at $46 million. The majority of that, about 42 million, is tied up in property, planning, and equipment. That's probably a highlight there you need to note. The other thing I would point out is on page, page 12, had to look at my notes there. At the end of the day, you have the statement of activities. I think the, the biggest thing to point out is your governmental funds ended the year with $130,000 in the black, which is good. The proprietary funds, your water sewer fund, that type of thing, ended up in the red, 1.2 million. However, and I always say this, we had right at $2 million of depreciation. So we got pipe in the ground, we got towers. We're writing this stuff off over like 40 or 50 years. So this is nothing coming out of your cash reserve. So when you take the loss and you add back depreciation, you really made about $700,000. That's the way I look, like to look at it. The other thing to look at is on page 15. And the thing I wanted to show you here is specifically the special revenue from the CRA. If you'll notice, the CRA is sitting here with about $444,000 of equity. The thing to note, too, you guys have done a great job paying that loan back, if you would, from the general fund to the CRA, and I don't know where the balance is right now.
Zero.
Zero.
Zero. Let's do a freaking.
I know.
Congratulations on that.
That was a, I want to tell everyone they don't know, but it was a $1.6 million of that the city owed to the, to the general fund, owed to the special revenue fund. And we started paying that off in 2014, and we made, the last payment was in May of this year.
Good for you.
And I'm so happy.
Oh, absolutely.
With all the commission agreeing to do this and the staff, and it's just a wonderful thing.
Congratulations. The other thing I wanted to point out on page 29 and page 30, just wanted to make you aware that, you know, there's some debt on the books, I don't know, $5 million. I know years ago, the mayor went out and got a tremendous amount of debt taken off the books and forgiven, if you'll recall. I know you worked hard on that.
I recall it was 28 million.
It was $28 million. You, you did really, really well with that. But page 29 and page 30 is the debt we have, low interest rates. I just wanted to make you aware of that. The other thing I wanted to let you see was on page 52, 53, and I'll let you look there if you want to, but these are basically, because of the size of your city, we make adjustments to your books, we draft your financial statements. Because city staff is very small, it's hard to maintain segregation of duties. So just, you know, be aware that you paid off your CRA, so that finding will actually come out next year. The one thing I would point out, too, and I know we've talked about this, Courtney, is there's a sinking fund requirement. You fixed it, too. Y'all fixing everything.
We fixed that. We'll be signing the check down Monday.
Okay, well, good, good. The other thing I wanted to point out was on page 55, and this is an easy thing to fix in my mind. There's a lot of receivables out there, so we set up allowance for doubtful accounts, but you guys just need to formally approve the write-off of all these old, old, old utility receivables. Just want to point that out to you as well.
And that was a finding last year as well, and we are having a difficult time coming up with sometimes a formula that we feel like would be fair to write off these receivables because it's a small community and.
Right.
With all due respect, many of them are, are family, I mean, because we're all family.
Sure.
And so it, it's difficult to come up.
I just wanted you to be aware of it. That was the biggest thing.
Okay, but we want to talk with our, us water sewer superintendent and Ms. Courtney, and we're going, we're going to get this off here because we have really brought down our findings in the past couple of years. And we want to, this is something simple, it's not going to cost us money, so we need to just take care of it.
That is exactly right. So that's kind of the audit. The other thing, because if you have to, I'll call the skinny audit, if you will, the CRA audit, because, and these numbers are rolling up into your city financials, but because you guys spent more than $100,000, we're required to actually go in there and issue a report on the CRA. At the end of the day, the, the opinion's clean, everything is fairly stated. I think that's probably the thing to be aware of. The last thing I'll talk about, and these letters are basically ones to the, I can't see, ones to the city council, ones to the governing board, CRA, if you would. The only thing to point out with these, excuse me, is here again, there are estimates in the financial statements. To our knowledge, staff didn't consult with any other CPA firms about any accounting issues. We had no problems when we dealt with your staff, just wanted you to be aware of that. Also, and here summarizes the adjustments that we had. But lastly, there's a representation letter signed by staff, basically applying to everything that they told us was correct. So I think you had a really good year as far as the audit is concerned. Congratulations, and I think next year will be better.
Good.
All right, okay, we thank you. And just, I don't have questions, but I've made a lot of notes, and for the, for the record, public record, I just wanted to go over right quick to let folks know that the city contributes to the Florida Retirement Service, service, is that what it's called? Florida Retirement System?
System, there is.
Because I'm in it, and I have about $4,000 in there because I make so little. But otherwise, the city contributes, last fiscal year 2021, $110,998 to the, to this employees' retirement, and the employees in the same year contributed $25,000. So that's a, that's a good benefit for the employees, and I'd just like to let the public know. And I want to let the public know also on our long-term debt, we have a loan for this building here with Centennial Bank. It's a 20-year loan, 3.94%. And at the, at the 10-year mark, we can pay that out or refinance it. And then we have a 1.34% loan that's, I believe, $83,000 is still due on that, and that's planning, and that's a new loan that we just took out, planning and design for the water expansion of Lighthouse Estates. And we were presented with numbers that the base rates there, the water, base rates there will fund this debt service on this one. And then we have a 1.54% loan to pay off the wastewater treatment plant, and then that's collateralized with water and sewer revenues, a 2.7% loan to pay off the Carabel Water Treatment Plant, also collateralized by water and sewer revenues, and a 2.7% loan to pay off the Land Art Water Treatment Plant. These water treatment plants had to be constructed because we were being fined with having disinfection, disinfection byproducts, and so we had to construct. This was about in 2006, '07, '08, somewhere in there, and so these loans were undertaken to construct these treatment plants. So that's it, that's all the loans this city has for now, so that's all I have to say. I'm proud of staff to bring down these findings like they have over the past year, two years.
Yes, ma'am.
And so we'll knock off a couple more. What we have, what the CRA is knocked off, the receivables will be knocked off, and we've already made, made our payment to the sinking fund.
So you're probably down to two. That's great.
Yeah.
That's great. That's outstanding, just leave a feather. Yeah, congratulations.
All right, thank you. It's a pleasure to see you.
That's all we have, Ben.
Thank you, and thank you all for answering our questions throughout the year.
Have a good night.
Okay.
Good night, Agent.
Thank you.
Okay, the next we have is another presentation by Kim Lee Horne Associates, and they're going to provide us an update with the state environmental, environmental impact for the proposed improvements at the Carabel Thompson Airport.
All right, good evening, everybody, Mayor.
Hello, nice to see you.
Thank you for having us this evening. We're here to provide, and we've got a little brief slideshow, and we'll keep it brief, much like everyone else, you know, y'all got a lot on your agenda tonight. It's been a good discussion to be a part of, so. My name's Connor Champlis, and this is Lindsay Slatterback, and we're with Kim Lee Horne, and we're the consultant toward the airport. So we want to talk to you about a project we have going on at the airport for a new taxiway design and construction. And right now, we're in the environmental stage for the state environmental impact report, and we're performing for the Department of Transportation. Just one minute for this to load. Excellent, all right, thank you. We can go ahead and go over the next slide. So the state environmental impact report, we're essentially evaluating the environmental effects of the project. It's a new taxiway, a new asphalt taxiway that's on the northeast end of the runway and, which leads to a future hangar area that's further to the northeast. And this was identified in the master plan and the airport layout plan that was conducted several years back as a, one of the top priorities for alternatives for future development at the airport. This will lead to efficient and safety out there on the runway, since there's only one single connection right now, and as well as future revenues from the future hangar facilities once constructed. We move to the next slide.
So Connor already briefly touched on what a CRA is, but it's pretty much required by the Department of Transportation for any construction project related to transportation. So this project qualifies, and so we've been working on looking at the environmental impacts of this project, so we've been stomping around out there. We've seen a lot of Tim, Courtney, Mayor LaPaz, so basically, this document is made up of several technical reports, and we'll go over it briefly, but it's basically an environmental phase and then an engineering analysis as well, and then they're kind of married together. So for the environmental analysis, there's the, the technical reports. So we've done the wetland evaluations report, which found that there were some impacts to wetlands, which was those funds that you all approved earlier this evening. We did the cultural resources assessment last week. The report's being tied up now. Nothing was found out there. There's also some species surveys going on, and then a contamination screening, and then we'll button that all up to a final document that goes in the CER.
All righty, and on the engineering side, there will be a preliminary engineering report, so we'll be investigating some of the things such as the soil conditions, drainage conditions, some of the more finer details, and making sure that it's designed in accordance with federal aviation administration standards, as well as the Florida Department of Transportation standards, and just making sure that, that we've essentially got ourselves a good design as we move this from the environmental phase to the, to the engineering phase. As part of this, we'll be doing some geotechnical survey to understand those soil conditions. That's currently ongoing out at the airport right now. And as Lindsay mentioned, the cultural resource assessment as well, and the listed species surveys.
So another big piece of this is public involvement, so that's why we're here right now, and we'll be back two more times this year, I believe, in October and December. Then there will be a public hearing for the public to come and see what we collected and, I think, comment on the report, and we're planning to do that in November, and it will be properly noticed at least 30 days before.
You said the public hearing will be noticed 30 days before.
At least.
Okay, in the newspaper and places like that, okay.
All right, so this is our initial time presenting, so, you know, we've got some work to do still, so looking out in the horizon, we're, we're continuing to finalize the reports and the fieldwork and the, on the environmental side and the engineering side. And as Lindsay mentioned, we've got some, some public hearings tentatively scheduled for November 2022 this year, and then once we get the CER all buttoned up, then we'll be proceeding with design and ultimately leading into the construction of these facilities. One thing I did want to note is that the design is intended to be a multi-phase design to where we can get the funds appropriated for the taxiways that will lead to the hangars, the hangars will follow after that, so just one distinction there. But that's really all we have, and we wanted to keep it short and brief and take any questions at this time.
Okay, well, we thank you. Do we have questions? I've, I've heard it and read it so much, I understand it myself, Courtney, I know she does.
I think, I think Tim could recite it, yeah.
Yeah, Courtney and I are even in that picture there.
That's right.
And I'm trying to see Tim, I don't see him, but I see Zach.
I think he's at the house in the lunchroom.
He's, he's in the weeds, yeah.
And Tim, do you have questions or something that you could ask that would help the public to understand?
No, it's just, the only thing I'd say is this is phase one of the, the master plan, which Kim Lee Horne had just completed last year or year before, and this will lead up to the, the phase two, which will be adding the development of this. So doing all this preliminary work will make it a lot easier for the, once construction starts, we'll be going right along as long as the money comes in.
Okay, and I, I know that Kim Lee Horne works closely with the DOT, and we just want to make sure that District 3 understands, or we know they understand that construction prices are skyrocketing, and we know that money is already allocated for this project in a five-year plan, but we, if there's any extra money anywhere, you know, because we're, I'm, I'm afraid we're not going to be able to build as many hangars as planned, you know.
It's a challenge that, that they're facing across the state, so they're certainly aware of it, frequent conversation about it.
Okay, and, and we want to get as many hangars as we can at the airport because hangars are what makes that airport self-sufficient. And right now, it's, it's self-sufficient, hanging on with a, by a thread there, but it doesn't cost the taxpayers money, and because we have main, one of the main reasons we have volunteer board helping Ms. Courtney to manage the airport. But a few more hangars would allow us to get a part-time manager or superintendent out there, which, which would help us in the future, but as we're depending on volunteer professionals right now to help us, so, okay.
So the taxiway is the way that you get up or you take off then, rather than use the regular?
Right, right now, without the taxiway, if you take off in the opposite direction, you have to taxi down the runway. It's a safety hazard in any airport.
Yeah, okay.
That's why there's always a parallel taxiway, but with the increase in traffic, with the development, the first, safety first, the taxiway has to come first to handle the load of the airplane that would be coming into the development.
That takes the taxiing off the main runway.
Yes, yes.
So right now, you call this a taxi-back runway, is that?
Yeah, taxi-back, yeah.
Taxi-back runway, because there's only one runway out there, and when they land, then they have to taxi back, and it's dangerous in the event that there's another aircraft coming in.
Right, if you taxi one way, they're landing the opposite, so you know.
And it's particularly, particularly dangerous in, in bad weather, foggy, cloudy weather.
All right, thank y'all for your time.
Okay, we thank you. Good to see you, and we'll look forward to seeing you next time, next three months, I guess. Okay, bye-bye. Okay, so then we have one more presentation by the Appalachia Regional Planning Council, and then to approve hiring a police officer, and I would suggest after that that we take a recess. All right, so item three, approve, disapprove city sponsorship of a grant for a vulnerability study conducted by the Appalachia Regional Planning Council, and we have our good friends from the Appalachia Regional Planning Council. I'm glad to see y'all. Just to introduce yourselves, sir.
Good day, Josh Adams with ERPC. Wasn't sure if this would have been a consent item or not, so I don't have a presentation prepared, but I can speak broadly just real quick. So Courtney mentioned that the city of Carabel was interested in conducting a vulnerability assessment that is in compliance with DEP's new resiliency statute, I think it's 380 oh nine two. That being said, we were approached by DEP, actually, we had our own grant in the works. They said, could you expand upon that? We really want all the municipalities throughout the state of Florida to be compliant with the new statute so that in the future, that box can be checked for distribution of any kind of funding that might be tied to that statute. So we met with staff, but we're still finalizing a, a financial and work plan to go along with it. That should be wrapped up the next week or two here, and going back and forth with the Department of Environmental Protection. But anyway, long story short, we anticipate it to be conducted, completed by end of this fiscal year, June 30th, 2023. We're not anticipating the city to expend any funds, so we would send the receipt, Carabel would get the money from DEP, and then it would be paid, so it wouldn't be on the hook, no liability for any outstanding funds. no liability for any outstanding funds. And if there's anything I missed that y'all want some clarification on, just let me know. Thank you all so much for having me up here tonight.
Okay, so the ARPC would be conducting a regional, Appalachia regional, wide vulnerability assessment for all the municipalities in the Appalachia region that do not have this done?
Yes, ma'am. Last year, we hired a consultant to do the counties for us. Now there's maybe like 10 or 12 that are going to do their own and then about 18 that don't have them. And so we're going to try to satisfy the requirements and get them all done this year.
That was my next question, about 18 municipalities do not have that vulnerability assessment. And the DEP is going to fund, provide the ARPC with funding to conduct this assessment for all 18 municipalities?
Yes, ma'am, a hundred percent funding, no natural requirement.
Okay, and then, but then the city of Carabelle would be sponsoring?
Yes, ma'am.
Act as the conduit for receiving and distributing the money, receiving the money from DEP and distributing it to?
That's correct. The way that the statute reads, you need to sponsor a county municipality.
Okay, similar to what we do with the artificial reef. And the ARPC, as they always do, they handle everything. You're familiar with the entire group there. They've done several projects for us. Did a disaster recovery project for us last year that helped take off one of the findings on the financial statement that we had for years. And come to find out, it was an easy thing to do and we're glad to have it. So we just need then approval to let the city act as a sponsor for this grant that the ARPC is going to be conducting through the DEP.
I'd just like to say that there is some funding out there that's available and the city does have projects, but because we don't have this vulnerability study, we're not eligible to apply. So if we get this study, it makes us eligible to apply for these funding to do these projects.
Right. And so we'll look at the assets owned by the city and we'll basically look at what a 100-year storm, in a 500-year storm, the inundation would look like projected over the years 2040, 2070. So with that information, you'll have a decent idea over those two planning horizons, what kind of situation the city might find itself in with its assets.
All right then, so yes, yes, sir, if you'll just come forward.
Well, my name is David Purnus and I just want to know, and you answered a little bit of it, what vulnerabilities will this address?
Vulnerabilities to flooding scenarios. And as codified by Florida statute, they're basically going to be using NOAA and FEMA values that go into a formula, into a geographic information system tool that will then allow us to see the potential flooding scenarios to a pump station, to city hall, to library, whatever asset it is.
That sounds great.
It is, it is a good thing. We need that assessment just so that we know, we need to know where we might need to conduct stormwater management projects as well. We're talking about allocating some of our American Rescue Plan Act funds towards some stormwater projects here in Carabelle.
And the state is going to be developing in, I think they're in role-making maybe now for statewide flooding, a state flood plan for a state flood plan. And any information that this fleshes out, you'd be able, the city would be able to submit projects to that state flooding plan and then be able to put, yeah, right, ask for funding to mitigate against those potential damages.
And we're actually working with the SUNS project through the Nature Conservancy and we actually were a top project that they had listed, identified through all of their projects, even over in Bay County. We had the top project and we couldn't qualify for money from the DEP because we didn't have that box checked. We did not have the vulnerability assessment. So we thought, when y'all were doing the counties assessments for the counties in the region, that the cities would be included, but we thought wrong.
Because of the timelines situation, yeah, that wasn't going to be possible, but we'll get it done this go-around.
Okay.
If this moves forward, how quickly could we have results?
So probably wouldn't get an award until the end of September. And so looking within, I don't know how many months is between September and the end of June, but that would be the timeline. So we should have it finalized by June, deliverable, if it's accepted by DEP, whatever kind of edits might be required, they then accept it. And then at that point in time, any future grants or contracts that require that vulnerability assessment to be done to the standards of the new statute, that will suffice.
June of '23?
Yes, sir.
Completed by '23, about a full year from now. Okay.
I would like to make a motion that the city sponsors the grant for the vulnerability study.
Okay. And that motion is by Commissioner Brown. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. All right, and that motion then by Commissioner Brown is to allow the city to sponsor the grant for the vulnerability study conducted by the ARPC, seconded by Commissioner Melinger. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure to see you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, bye-bye. All right, next item up is discussion of possible action regarding a new police officer. And we have Chief Shindman to speak with us. And it's a pleasure to see you, Chief.
Good evening, good evening. Just wanted to come before the commission tonight. We did have a full-time officer leave us for a position with the Franklin County Courthouse back around mid-June. We ran and had the paper and only went out and applied, which was Matt Murray. I know a bunch of you know Matt from Carabelle. He did work with us for a brief time. He's also had time with the sheriff's office. And so I would like to see about getting him approved to go full-time as of this coming on Saturday, the sixth.
Make a motion to approve chief's recommendation.
I'll say it.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve Officer Matt Murray, who's working part-time now, right, to full-time as of Saturday.
Yes.
And that motion is by Commissioner Melinger, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that motion carries, short and sweet. You hadn't waited a long time, but moving forward, sir. All right, and we'll, these other items that we have, the next three items are going to be some discussion items and we'll just go ahead and take a quick break and maybe 10 minutes and then we'll start in again. Is Mr. Hartman anywhere in the building? All right, I'm reconvening this meeting Tuesday, Thursday, August 4th, 2022, Carabelle City Hall Chambers. So we'll move forward. We're still under new business. Item five, discussion of possible action regarding development of boat ramp overflow parking area on Southeast Avenue C. So I sent in a couple of pictures. I told you all before, I had some pictures of some boat ramp parking right at boat ramps at the Shell Point and Mexico Beach. But Courtney, I guess we would show also where this overflow parking area is on Southeast Avenue C and the location of the old water plant facility. And I'm sure everyone in this room and all the others that were here earlier have experienced and seen all of the issues that we have with, especially on snapber days, fisherman anglers with their trucks and trailers and they're everywhere, they're parked everywhere and they're parking in front of businesses and leaving that, you know, their vehicle and trailer there for eight, 10 hours. And businesses are somewhat upset about it, the business owners. So, and we have this, we have tried to, we have some signage that was put up to try to direct these anglers to bring their truck and trailer unit over here to this facility. They would come down off the Marine Street boat ramp down Southeast Third Street and then into that parking lot. But the parking lot has the, it's got lime rock, a lime rock base, it's been leveled, but it has the appearance that you could get stuck in there and not only just stuck in dirt appearance, but if everyone doesn't park just right, it can be haphazard and it could give the appearance that somebody's going to get blocked in. So we need to develop, you know, we talked about, we've got money in the boat ramp account, boat ramp fee account. And we talked about what could we do to design a boat ramp facility. And I know I mentioned to you all in another meeting, I think it was a CRA meeting, you see how the trailers are there on the left-hand side to me, and this is at Mexico Beach, they have a beautiful facility. Looks like they unload their trailers there and then bring their vehicles back up here by the ramp so they don't have to walk so far. And then this is the Spring, Shell Point Boat Ramp Facility. And I just brought that to kind of show how it's circular and they're parking on the sides and then parking in the middle as well. And this is for Russell to, you know, get some parking ideas because he may have to draw us a parking lot. Don't know if we can afford to invest that kind of money there that they have at Shell Point, but we could, I don't know what, we would put gravel down, what can we do to make people use this parking lot?
At least maybe even log ties?
Yeah, log ties.
Or sometimes it'd make it look like a parking lot.
Right now, it's grassed over. Streets and roads does keep the grass mowed down, but grass is grown over the lime rock and they're just not driving onto it. We have some money.
Mayor, I know is the TDC, that would seem like a good TDC project. Attention.
The TDC, it seems like they won't find anything unless it's got a beach in front of it.
But this property is in our CRA district and we have other grant money, so.
We have sufficient boat ramp money.
It is water-related, right?
It is water-related. Now, I was told that they would, if we want to make a big consolidated sign at the boat ramp telling everything and a map to this, to the parking lot and do this and don't do that, one of those signs, that the TDC would fund that.
What sign?
Of one consolidated sign. We need, we just need to design it and take it to sign design and get a quote and TDC will fund it. But I don't know if they, Franklin County has their own parking issues and they, I'm sure if there's a parking lot to be funded by the TDC, that Franklin County will fund their parking issues. And once they do that, then, and I see that it's being done, then I can ask them.
I think they just funded one in East Point, additional boat ramp parking, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, but the TDC didn't do that. Because I sit on that board and I know we didn't do that.
Oh, okay. I thought it was the TDC.
So do you have suggestions, Mr. Russell?
Do we have survey on this property?
Yes.
Topographic?
On a type, I did boundary.
Okay.
Do you think we need a topo for a parking lot?
To keep those kinds of scenes.
Yeah, right, and there may be an opportunity to do some grading and to, you know, create the space that's more functional, so that can be, that can be meaningful. But I'm happy to take a look at that. I'm sure Thurman did the survey?
Yes.
Okay.
So can we have, can we have Russell take a look at this?
We need a motion. We want a lot more.
Yeah, I thought, right, I thought there's a lot more.
It's close to five acres in total, but that includes half a hill, right?
Does the city own the property that goes out to, what is that, Fifth or Third? Our Fifth, Third?
But it's very low there. You know, we looked at that property to put this building on and it was, it was so low down there by Southeast Fifth Street that we decided not to do that.
Down on that end of it, there's cattails and lily pads growing in the end of it down there.
We actually have all of that.
And that is low as well, this bottom portion here.
And then what is lime rock is basically this top piece.
That open, it's already open?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I'd love to take a look at it.
Okay, that would be wonderful. With me, is it okay with the rest of you?
Yeah, I think you can take a look at it. I actually saw five of those boats, I mean trucks and trailers parked in there this past weekend.
That's great.
But they, you know, and Russell, he's the professional, he can take a look at it, but with those five big, and when I say big, now, you know, if a boat and trailer is long, and they were back then, had their nose almost out to the right of way, which no one could block them in unless they parked on the right of way. And it wouldn't accommodate a whole lot more.
And you think it might accommodate 10 or 15, no?
You'd be pushing.
We have, it's, we have some city stuff in that corner that's on the corner of Third and C. What is that?
Pump stations from the sewers.
It's just parks?
Yeah.
And that can be moved away. But that's sitting on hard ground.
It's a big hill.
There's lots of nice trees.
Commissioner Brown, where are you saying?
Can you point to where that all the stuff is?
The corner closest to the.
And there, and what might tender the parking lot is there's nice oaks there.
Okay.
I don't think we would want to cut down those oaks.
A lot of those oaks are up on that high hill. And Russell mentioned grading. When he takes a look at it, he'll realize that that's too high to be grading. That's a lot.
I do remember, I do remember.
It's what they call relic sanding.
Yeah.
So, but we're trying to just do something, figure something to alleviate these parking issues that we have for truck trailers and staying all day in front of the businesses and blocking private driveways and all these things that they do because they want to fish.
There's some days there down on our street, from my house.
Okay, well, Commissioner Brown, you want to make a motion to direct Mr. Larch to investigate this?
Yes, I'd make that motion.
Maybe bring us a conceptual?
Right.
Motion for Mr. Larch to bring us a conceptual for the overflow boat parking at Southeast Avenue C.
I'll say it.
Okay, and so we have that motion by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Allen for Russell to prepare us a conceptual regarding parking on Southeast Avenue C at the old water plant facility. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries. Or do you think we need any further discussion on this item tonight? Okay, we'll have, we'll put this under old business then next month and have some further discussion. Thank you very much. Okay, then we're going to move on to old business and this is discussion of possible action concerning parking along Marine Street, Tallahassee. I beg your pardon?
Item number six, discussion of commercial building awnings constructed four feet six inch from main building with structural support beams anchored to approximate center of sidewalk. And this is requested by Alan Russell at 210 Marine Street, the White Kitchen Building. I'm surprised Mr. Russell isn't here and you decide, he requested this and you decided it was going to be on the agenda. He brought this before the CRA board. These commission members are required to sit on the CRA, so they sit on the CRA board, as do I. And so we've seen this before, but if you would put that drawing that they, and so we are, everyone in here knows where the White Kitchen is, right? So we don't really need the map if we know where that is. But they did bring a drawing and they talked about they were going
White Kitchen is, right, so we don't really need the map if we know where that is, but they did bring a drawing and they talked about they were gonna have eight-by-eight posts, I can't remember how many, anchored to the sidewalk, and I've got a lot of questions here, but he's not here, but I'm just gonna ask the questions that I have, since I don't know how many eight-by-eight posts. I will say that you, I looked into this and generally awnings are self-anchored, they're not, you know, they're not brought down and anchored to the ground, that to me is making more of a porch or a patio addition to the building and this would be a public property. It was with the same email, Courtney, that I sent those other photos. So, and I had asked in the, and we got it here to the commission because I asked Mr. Hartman during the CRA meeting, would we need a variance to extend their building over the sidewalk, because actually, in my opinion, if they're going to bring it out and anchor it down, then they're extending their building, and maybe we need a variance, and certainly the CRA can't do that, that's done on the city side, we need to make sure that they would have a four-foot wide pathway, walkway. Who is the responsible party if an awning or structure like that is damaged in any way? You know, just now that it's anchored to the city property, does it belong to the city? If it's damaged, who would force the property owner to repair, remove this awning structure? So, if you had a sidewalk encroachment agreement, it would have to be very detailed. Liability, you know, we still haven't received, when this temporary sidewalk encroachment agreement for Harry's, while they're under construction, we still haven't received proof of their liability insurance, they would have to carry liability insurance. I'm concerned that if, and this is not a quasi-judicial yet, we might send it to the PNC, but I'm concerned if we do one, allow one like this, it's gonna set a precedence, and if we decide we want to do one, I believe that everything needs to look the same, we need to develop some specifications, it needs, it's gonna be, just like if we accept a city roadway, it has to be built to city specifications, if they're gonna, if somebody wants to construct something like this on city property, it needs to be built to specifications. It needs to be also built to architectural specifications so that we don't have a hodgepodge of different kind of awnings sticking out here and there, and so that we can develop a uniform look throughout the city. I already mentioned that this would change the historical look, and we do have some groups that are concerned with maintaining the historical look, and I would say, if we do agree to something like this, that we need to be prepared to develop a sidewalk encroachment agreement for multiple property owners, because they would be ready to get more room. I mean, they could not only use it for dining, they could use it for putting their.
Racks.
Yeah, the racks and whatever they're selling, their souvenirs and stuff, so.
You know what I think would look great on that building? I looked at it, and I saw them on numerous other buildings, is a vinyl or canvas awning, and the framework for a vinyl or canvas awning could be anchored to the wall, it's not heavy at all.
The thing with that is it has those arms?
Yeah.
And you wouldn't have much clearance walking under it?
I looked at that when I was down there, and where those windows are up high enough to where you would have to anchor your, use your framework for your vinyl or canvas, is high enough that it wouldn't be hanging down that far, it would be up considerable. Anyway, that's just a thought, I think that would look attractive on it myself.
And someone suggested to me one of these roll-out sun awnings, like you see advertised on TV.
Yeah, but they usually have braces, and when they roll out, they're hanging out there.
That's true, a lot of this, and that would block the sidewalk, we can't have the sidewalk blocked.
But anyway, I saw those like I'm describing, and they're pretty attractive, and a lot of them are, if you will, for as far as the historical thing goes, they're built and designed to meet some of those eras, yeah.
I don't think that light pole nine feet from that.
I was just thinking the same thing.
I walked by there, every day, I've never even measured it, but I don't see how any way it could be nine feet.
Right, I don't understand, you know, so we would have to do some, if we think we're going to approve it, more investigation would have to be done, because we can't, he's saying that's 4.6, he's gonna bring that post out four feet, six inches. But then how much room, where, if he's putting seating under there, how much room is between the pole and?
It's not, you can't walk around it, you wouldn't be able to walk around it. And I mean, Appalachia, Oyster City, the brewery, they have the same type of seat, of awning that they're talking about, and they have the posts that come down to the sidewalk, but they go to the edge of the sidewalk, so they have seating right on the edge, right up to the building, and you could easily get through, but if you do the post in the middle of the sidewalk, you're not gonna be able to walk around that easily, and especially if you're putting tables there, so. I'm not far against it, but I think if they're gonna do it, it would need to go all the way to the end.
And I did, you mentioned New Orleans, and I looked, and it's reminiscent of New Orleans, but they're, all their awnings that I could see on the street view there were self-supporting, and then what comes out to the edge that hangs over are balconies, and those supports are out to the very edge of the sidewalk, so there's plenty of walkway.
Exactly, that's what I was saying.
There's supporting balconies.
Yes.
And the difference here is that as you come around that corner, you have property, and then you come back down to the normal sidewalk, and my opinion that if you have to make just a one exception for him, and if we could do that, I would be in favor of it, and without having to commit to, if we do this, then everybody gets it, because everybody would be out in the middle of the road if they used that same difference. So, that's, and the fact that he's a neighbor of mine, and, you know.
And another concern is cars pull up over the sidewalk.
I've seen it developed out there, during our, some of our holidays where we have extra stuff right in there, get, we get satagals to sit back in there, and all the kids come out and get in the lab, you know, that's all because of that extra corner where it goes out before it comes back to the sidewalk, and if there's some way that he could use that little extra, I'd be in favor of that. That's, as they say, just my.
That's fine, that's good. I don't know how we can just pinpoint one property owner and say, this one property owner can do this, because I don't think.
I don't think we need to. His situation is only one way, there's not another place in town that I know of that has that kind of corner.
Well, Mr. Brown kinda does, and what if he wanted to do it?
Now, it's next door to her business.
What is that, the realty company on the corner there across from you? Not an anchor, but the.
Coastal.
Not secret, it's Coastal Properties, they're on the corner, they have quite a bit of land there.
Well, they don't really have the sidewalk around them. I just don't wanna block the sidewalk, and that light post makes it block what they're trying to do.
Well, we can't block the sidewalk.
Right.
We can't approve something that's gonna block the sidewalk, has to be, as Russell says, a four-foot pathway, walkway, not obstructing.
And if they are only going out four feet, six inches, and they're putting tables there, that's not possible, there's no way to have a four-foot walkway. Look, they're not here.
No, they're not here.
Isn't there a fire plug right there?
Yes.
You gotta be careful about obstacles, putting around a fire plug, gets a lot of park.
There's one right around this corner.
Now, my opinion is he can put awning up there, why, through this, not put poles down.
Well, that's what I was suggesting.
If he can't, need to get him a contractor, because they can build awning up there, why, there are poles.
I talked to a contractor this week also, and they're gonna have to redo that roof for sure, and there's ways that they could anchor a porch coming out when they redo that roof, but instead of having them come down, they have it go up, so it just elongates the roof. And then there won't be anything to hit your head, and it'll still be a cover. There's ways around.
And then I think, I think the reason he came now, and I did ask him in that CRA meeting, was because he wants outside dining, and he did see that Harry's had outside dining, but he wasn't aware that that was a temporary agreement, so, you know, he may be coming back to ask for outside dining, so this is something new that the city's gonna have to look at, yeah, and make some, you know, more of.
The junction is outside dining.
Yeah, but well outlined guidelines, in the sidewalk encroachment agreement for Harry's, it's outlined that their seating is supposed to be directly against and adjacent to their real property, it's supposed to be up against like Caribou Junction, but they have yet to do that, they still have it out in the sidewalk, and then the chairs get moved, and they're using regular four-tops instead of two-tops like we designated, and so you're having a hard time having a four-foot pathway there right now.
Should we table it, or should?
Excuse me?
Well, I have two commissioners on my right that say it can be done, anchored to the building.
Yes.
There's definitely ways around.
And I have another commissioner then that says it.
You're extending a building out of private, on public property, yes?
It's risky business, I think you're saying.
You're gonna have buildings.
We'd have to change all kinds of working sites.
No, I don't think that's from.
I know it, I worry about liability and if there's, if there's a damage to it, who's, you know, who's gonna clean it up, if a hurricane, storm, something blows it, whose responsibility?
If a car hits it, they drive a lot of sidewalks every day.
Okay, so we have, Mr. Keith Walden says to send it back and let Mr. Russell reconsider.
'Cause I don't think we're gonna approve this.
Okay. Mr. Hartman, do we need a motion to send it back, or just send it back?
You know, it's discussion and possible action, so you can, you can just not, I mean, we've certainly discussed it, and it does not require action.
All right, let me just ask the, ask the public, does the public have any input on this? Okay, I see Mr. Christoperson does, I mean, you know, it's always nice to get other input, wanna know what people are thinking, because.
Well, someone else can talk after me, but I just pulled up the street view, I mean, there's a fire hydrant there too, that doesn't look like it's very far from the building, and then that light pole, by the time you come up four, six, you're gonna be pretty close to that pole, and now what, you're gonna have to walk around that pole every time you, if you don't go underneath the awning, and I think you're gonna have a hard time with that corner where the two roofs are gonna meet, the sidewalk cuts, it's not as wide there, so now that corner post is gonna be out there practically in the streets, I don't know, I just.
It's real weird.
It seems like it's gonna be a little crowded.
It's an idea, a lot of people like the idea of outside dining, it doesn't bother me, but maybe we need, you know, another plan, or this is something that we could, if we wanted to send it to PNC to see if we want to develop some specifications for these businesses, if they want to do, yes, or Mr. Tim?
Yeah, I see further on the agenda that you're talking about the parking, Marine Street, Tallahassee, that has always been a huge problem, that section right there, because of new businesses there, this man wants to get that restaurant open, it's been sitting there forever, and maybe it's time to look at that whole section and think about maybe one-way traffic coming in from the Tallahassee, I mean, 98, and that would give you a lot more room to move things around and merchandise outside, outdoor seating, so it's something to consider, that whole section right there, because that's really becoming, you know, the main street.
Right, okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, any other comment? Any comment, Mr. Prentice?
Yeah, what seems obvious is maybe we just ask Russell, his name's Russell, Mr. Russell?
Yes, Alan Russell.
Alan Russell, right, you know, come back to us with some more specifics of what your vision is.
Okay, so there we have public comment as well, and we'll just, we'll just send it back to him and ask him to give us some more specifics, and then we can decide if this is something that we might like to do throughout the city and have some architectural guidelines. You know, it could be, it could be a good thing, we just need to go about it in the right way, however that is. Yeah, okay. All right, all right then, now can we go to old business? And we have two items under there, old business, item one, discussion of possible action concerning parking along Marine Street and Tallahassee Street, and so I looked at your video that you all, this was tabled from last month, and you all discussed a two-hour parking limit, and it was, I think you talked about to outline the, right now we have a one-hour parking limit for an area that's outlined in our ordinances, but I don't understa, I can't even, it's so vague, I can't understand the description, and I think some of you had talked about it needed to be a better description, so, and I've had, I've received several, and Mr. Tim was just one, and he has earlier told me a couple of weeks ago, and several people have said that something that would help this parking issue that we have is to make a one-way traffic from Highway 98 going south to southeast Avenue C, but I guess first we have a one-hour parking limit, do we want to change that to two, three, four, five, whatever we want to change it to? We want, do we want to better outline the district for the two-hour parking limit? The chief is here, he's moved up to the front seat, he wants to also participate in this as a similar, somewhat like a workshop. Would this be just for the downtown businesses? Maybe we need to put a time limit at the Marine Street Pavilion, because we know we've got huge parking issues there on the weekend, they come and stay three, four days a week downtown. Something we could do with the boat overflow parking is no overnight parking throughout the city except at the boat overflow parking, and they could, we could put an iron horse there as well, and let folks pay to park there overnight, no camping, but they could park there overnight for their weekend dog island trip, and pay, pay ten, fifteen dollars a night to park there.
Would you have to put some kind of line in there?
Line, security line.
Vehicles get fertilized, gotta think about that too.
And do we want to have, like, there's other parking places throughout the city, the Mesa Pavilion, at the post office there along Tallahassee, kind of across from Marine Street, do we wanna put parking limits on that, parking time on that, or let that be just in the daytime from sunup to sundown, because there's no overnight parking?
And Commissioner Brown, come up with this map based on what our discussion was last month, about the areas that we might be looking at, and maybe the areas that need to be limited, or what would we change?
Red lines would be limited to whatever we decide those limitations are, and then the green would just be.
Us, no overnight parking otherwise.
Yes.
And I see you got in front of the Marine Street Pavilion, limits, that's very good, that's good.
Because that's kinda what we had talked about, but then, but then here in front of the condos, because people live here, they're gonna have overnight guests, and it would be fair to limit them, so, and then you have all these parking spaces on Avenue C, and then again, over here on B, so employees for our businesses downtown have plenty of places they can park.
They do.
All day long, and, you know, Harry's, their employees can park here, anywhere down here, Marine Street down here, Tallahassee Street, there's tons of parking here for the employees and in this lot.
The Mesa Pavilion is completely unused.
Right.
Employees could park there, you know, people.
There's lots of unlimited, there's. There's lots of unlimited, there's more unlimited than limited, but where our businesses are, if they, like, just in front of my store on this block right here, we've got, these people are obviously working, already maybe their building, they have an employee, I have an employee, Chase is moving over here, she'll have an employee, they have an employee. We have eight spots. So if everyone parks their car on our street all day, then customers only have four spots. That doesn't make sense. But I've talked to everyone, we've worked it out. But, you know, it would be nice to have some guidance.
If you go on up past the marathon, there's plenty of parking spaces up there by the, um, the Welcome Park.
Right.
There's plenty of parking spaces at the Messer Pavilion. Uh, on Avenue C where you've got the great, there's three parking spaces on the other side of Avenue C.
Oh yeah, that's right, I couldn't see them.
But there's three there.
There's lots of spots there. And this is just my suggestion and I was thinking we would get signs that say vehicle parking only so people aren't parking there with their trucks and boats, the trailers. Uh, two-hour limit violators will be towed, but it would be up to business owners or whoever to call it in and just like we do our normal code ordinance complaint type things, you'd have to call it in to do something. Would it be something that the police chief or his guys and ladies would have to monitor? And drive around all day and time it out?
It's not completely true.
Okay, so... Yes.
They give you a warning ticket.
Right, now the chief's gonna speak because we wanna know how we can enforce any of this.
There should be no running out parking time, timelines. There's, there's no way to, to police that.
Okay.
If I sit there for an hour or two hours watching the vehicle and I get a call, I have to leave and come back, then my two hours start over. Or if I leave and, and come back and they boot the car, I have no way to prove that they did not. So to, to start taking public parking places and putting time limits on it, no way to police that, and it's just gonna create a lot of, a lot of problems. It's gonna create a lot of problems. I agree with the signs. I think the signs are a good thing as far as like no overnight parking, you know, on your vehicle be towed at your expense. Um, I think that would address a lot of issues as far as people parking overnight. The issues with the condos and people that have guests that park there overnight, there again, it's a public parking space. So you can't pick and choose, oh, because I live in the condo, I can have my guest park across the street. You know, that's, you can take that chance if you want to, but if it's gonna be overnight parking, it needs to be across the board. It doesn't need to be, you know, this part here, not this part there. I think that's gonna just create more problems as well. So I, I don't agree with the, the limited hour parking. I, I think it's just too much to try to do. Uh, I've looked at other cities and what they do and whenever there's a parking issue like that where they do have a timeline on it or a timeframe, it's a fine. And it's usually worth from fifteen to thirty dollars. And so to address that part, if we did go that route and it was a fine, then we would have to try to figure out if they took the money, if they weren't contested, were they contested that, we'd have to get it to a magistrate and all this other stuff. So I think, and my, this is just my opinion, the best thing to do is not have any timeframe on any parking. I think you're just gonna create a mess. Because we've already had this situation come up where another business owner has called up about one-hour parking in front of this business because of the signs that are put up in front of Harry's. So that's my thoughts.
And how do these signs, thank you very much, how do these signs get in front of Harry's that says one-hour parking?
We put them down there because there is an ordinance in effect that says there's one-hour parking.
And Harry, uh, Harry's bar requested that?
Yes, they did.
And, and they were having an issue actually all the way down Marine Street, the, you know, the truck trailer units were parking.
Right. And like I said, the sign of, you know, vehicles only is, is a good thing. No overnight parking is a great thing. Um, the issue with Harry's is they're doing construction in the back kitchen here, the guy that's doing the work has his vehicle parked there all day long with his construction further right behind him.
That he does.
So how is that a not violation if we're gonna do the one-hour parking? You can't pick and choose. It's either gotta be a hundred percent across the board or nothing at all.
Yes, Mr. Prentice?
Thank you. Chief, I don't presume to know policing business at all, um, but when I was a student at FSU, um, I got caught on several occasions post, uh, parking at the post office on FSU campus and I could never figure out how they figured out it, you know? All the vehicles were moving all the time, how'd they know it was me? Well, they put chalk on the wheels and they're able to tell when the vehicle moves. So it's not that you have to stay there the whole time, you just put a mark on the, the tire and then next time you come back two hours later, if you happen by there and it hasn't moved, then you, you know that that vehicle hasn't moved. That, that, that's just a, a simple suggestion. I get it, nobody wants to do a stakeout sitting there watching a vehicle. And then regarding, uh, uh, Mr. Russell working on the building, I, I think it's reasonable to make special exceptions for an individual that's working on their, their business. Um, and, and that, that could be accommodated. We all, it's not, it's not like we're a huge city that we don't know each other and who, whose vehicle that is working on the, on the structure.
Now, we have made a special exception for Harry's, that's why they've got the sidewalk encroachment agreement.
I just meant for the parking, though. Somebody was gonna be there for a long time.
Right. And, and if, you know, we're trying to consider whether to remove this ordinance as the chief has suggested or to extend it to two hours or three hours is...
When this subject first came up, I'd like to, to make a comment. When this subject first came up, I was in favor of the limit, the time limit on the parking, two hours, one hour, whatever the board decided to do. But since that time, I've had a lot of thought and comment and I've actually had some discussion with, with our police department. And I've come to realize, just as the chief has described tonight and made a point of, it's, it's all, it'd be virtually almost impossible for them to enforce a one-hour, two-hour, three-hour. And even with the Mr. Prentice's suggestion with the chalk, I don't see how anybody got by with that cause I could, I see how that could be disputed and I'm not a lawyer, but he is. But anyway... But anyway, so where I'm going with that is, is I've got a little bit better understanding and thought and time to think about it. The overnight parking, I was in favor of that, no overnight parking, especially down there in front of our pavilion. I'm still in favor of that, no overnight parking. Uh, and that would be more enforceable than this one-hour, two-hour. And the other thing about the one-hour, two-hour is we don't have meters like the city of Tallahassee when you pull up on Main Street in Tallahassee, you get out and put your quarters in and you get, set your time, thirty minutes, an hour, two hours, whatever you can fill that meter up to. We don't have those and we don't have meter maids. We're, we, we just carribelle. So anyway...
That's right.
Yeah, we're just carribelle. So anyway, in, in my opinion, I, I do, I support the no overnight parking signs, especially down at the pavilion. And also the signs, if we wanna put them up, no truck and trailer parking, vehicular parking on them, that's a good suggestion, especially in those areas where that needs to be, just a singular vehicle.
Can, can that be done, Chief? Cause we have discussed that in the business district to say we're, we, we needed to find the business district and then no truck trailer parking in the business district.
All the vehicles are being towed at owner's expense. As long as that disclosure is on there, then, then we're, then we're getting rights.
And when you, when you pull up there, it's obvious that this is a truck and trailer or a single vehicle, so, yeah.
And we have, uh, now we have signs at the Messer Pavilion because we had some overnight parking going on there and they were actually hooked up to the water. So we put a lock on the water faucet even. So, um, had a water hose to the water.
You locked my water faucet?
And now we park under the pavilion instead of in the parking spots.
Yeah. So, well, maybe we need to put a sign up there because that pavilion, Russell, we had him doing that years ago and I asked Russell about it. It's not constructed, I think the concrete's like sidewalk thickness or something, so. Um, but, uh, yes, I'm, I'm for no overnight parking at the, at the Marine Street Pavilion and, and anywhere right around there at that Riverwalk Park. Uh, because people come there and they're, they are there for a week. The fourth of July, there were several cars that were there for a week.
Oh, I know, I know.
And people that wanna use the pavilion or fish or come watch our fireworks, they can't do it. People are parked there, they're gone, they're not spending money in Carribean and so much. Yes.
So how will we enforce no overnight parking if we can't enforce a time limit parking?
My night shift guys can patrol through that area quite often, which they do anyway. What if there's a vehicle there at eight o'clock and then it's there at twelve o'clock and it's there at two o'clock in the morning? That vehicle's gonna be towed because it's been there overnight. So that would be, that would be one way to, to take care of that issue. Um, and, and two other things, I do agree with Mr. Sullivan's assessment of the one-way. Uh, we, you know, me and Courtney had talked about that a long way, brainstorming ideas on how to address this parking fiasco. Um, the problem with the one, with the, with the way the street is set up now is so tight and we changed the parking to accommodate more space so people pass through there, but it's still congested. And so if we were to be able to change that one-way parking and sound from ninety-eight up to Avenue C, then that would eliminate the issues we have and accidents that we have through that area as well.
And I've received, I've received several suggestions for that, to have that one-way from ninety-eight to Southeast Avenue C. And Courtney, would you point that out with your quarter or something like that?
This would be C.
Uh-huh, that's southeast.
The A here at the top and Avenue C right here.
And of course, if it was one-way coming south, the diagonal parking spaces there like in front of the...
Would be slipper down?
Yes, that would have to be changed.
You're coming south.
But how would you go the other way without reconstructing all those side streets?
You'd have to come back and go back around on Southeast Avenue C, First Street...
To the park?
A bigger pardon? First Street. First Street and First Street's, uh, that's slated, that's slated to be resurfaced, uh, what First Street is.
Terrible.
And then come back up and park, you can park on Avenue B to come back around, to walk around, um, or come, come on back out to ninety-eight and drive back around.
The B would have to be one-way to First Street also.
No, it wouldn't.
Then you can turn, okay.
Yes, you come back out on B and then go back.
Gotcha.
And if you were coming west on B, you'd come west on B and then go south on. And that would stop a lot of the truck trailer units after they put in, they could come back north on ninety, on, on, um, Marine Street, but they could only come as far north as C. And then they would have to turn down, they would be forced to turn down to go down to that overflow parking lot. They couldn't come down to the business district and, and that would help alleviate the parking of, of truck trailer units in the business district.
And if we did that, we probably could on the opposite side of Marine Street, turn the parking back how it was because you wouldn't need as wide of a road so you could have more parking.
On the opposite side, like where Harry's is?
Yeah.
On the riverside.
Which would eliminate the truck trailer issue as well. Cause then you wouldn't have enough room to put the trailer out there in the middle of the road. So. One question though, the parking on Avenue C, would that be considered part of, as a park or would it just be public parking? Since it would be part of the pavilion, Marine Street overflow parking?
Well, that's, you know, these are these spots right here.
Well, the reason, the reason why I'm asking is you said overnight, no overnight parking, but we allow overnight parking at the Avenue C parking lot.
No.
No overnight parking, oh, there, yeah.
Yeah, I'm talking about where they, where they'll, they'll...
Yeah, and that was just a suggestion and if we allowed that, they would pay. They would buy a ticket, you know, like you do at a campground and pay for a certain number of days and put that up on there, put the money in, in the iron horse and put their ticket up on their windshield.
So, but, but it would have to be, it would have to have a sign that says for, you know, fishing only or whatever, cause you don't want campers walking there.
No, no campers, you have to say that, no campers.
You'd have to limit bans, campers, people saying, oh, we can stay here overnight for three or four days.
Just call it Dog Island Parking. I mean, that's the only people that would really be there anyway.
And the, in the afternoons of like the weekend where all the people are bringing their boats out, they come up and turn right on B, on Avenue B and go back out and get on ninety-eight that way. And it's almost like a constant truck and, truck and boat, truck and boat, truck and boat, all for a couple of hours and, and for the day, every day that there's a big fishing stuff going on.
Well, we have tried, we, we've got to, this past year, we surfaced Southeast Fifth Street and to make that where they could pull out, straight out of the Marine Street boat ramp, go down to Southeast Fifth Street and come out on ninety-eight. We've surfaced that to make it a connector. Now we've surfaced Southeast, uh, Ninth Street to make that a connector between Gulf Avenue and ninety-eight to give them actually another way to come out and keep from going downtown. Uh, so we'll either have to put up some signage or, or something to get the word out so that they can redevelop their habits.
I think we need some like boat ramp parking this way on those streets from ninety-eight and Gulf.
I've seen them using them there this past weekend, you know, I live right there and there was boats and trailers coming down Ninth Street all the time.
Great.
So they were using them.
They use all of them, there's so many of them.
Courtney, I was gonna mention too, we might wanna get them dusting and have that sign put out on weekends, that big billboard sign that shows additional parking where to go. That might be just another visual tool for them to find the area.
Well, we've got some time cause Snapar season just closed.
The group was coming.
Group, yes.
But they pushed it back a little bit, so.
Oh, they did, okay.
Do we need more time to think about this? Seems like we've got a lot of time.
Okay, so we agreed though, we want no overnight parking in some designated areas. And we have no overnight parking and the parks are closed. Now, this one on, um, the corner of Avenue C that, uh, well, let's see, I don't know where it is, but right next to it, that's the corner of Avenue C and Marine Street. That, that may possibly be a park because, you know, we've talked on the CRA that we're gonna put the Mariners Memorial there. So I don't know if we would consider that a park, maybe, maybe not, but it is a good place for people, employees to park. It's excellent, there's like ten or twelve spaces there, fifteen would cost a street. So, but anyway, we've talked about, we don't want overnight parking in some designated areas and it seems like we agree on that. It seems like we agree that we don't want truck trailer parking in the business district. So we would need to outline the business district. I, I, I don't know, I mean, I, the one-way traffic there that's been suggested by many, how do we feel about it? I, I'm okay with it. I think it's, I think it's a good idea.
That's what I was gonna say.
Ask Mr. Hartman.
Cause there might be some people opposed to it. I'm, I don't see a problem with it itself.
It's pretty late night to be discussing that. Now, do we need a, do we need a public hearing if we go to a...
I think a public hearing would be a good idea, but I don't think it's required. It's not like an abandonment, you don't need to pass a resolution or anything, we just changing traffic flow for public safety and all this, but it certainly wouldn't hurt to have a public hearing.
You may have some landowners that would be miffed if they didn't have an opportunity
Know that it was happening.
Right.
So the one-way traffic is, is suggested, is suggested to, from the chief, not to have a time limit.
No overnight parking?
No overnight parking, no truck trailer in business district. We need to outline where is the business district.
And the good thing about the signage and the no overnight parking and vehicles towed at owner's expense, it takes us out of the citation ordinance violation issue. If their vehicle's illegally parked and it gets towed, they have to take that up with the tow truck company to get it back. We would no longer be involved in that other than just, hey, I need to have this vehicle move, it's been here overnight.
Otherwise you could end up having to go to court, stay all day for twenty-five dollars. Well...
So you don't think just putting the signs that say two-hour parking would at least deter people from doing it? You're still gonna have people that are gonna do it?
It's not the deterrent, it's the calls that we're gonna get on because people, business owners and other people are gonna see it and go, well, you know, how can they do it and I can't do it? It's just, it's, it's not feasible to try to regulate all of them to, to, you know, find the ones that are doing it and to sign them.
They would have to, it would have to be enforced.
Yeah. Yeah, because it'd be, it would be an ordinance violation, so.
Well, as he described and as I had talked to them in the last couple of weeks, the officers, they, it's really not enforced.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
I just see that we're growing and I would rather get ahead of it than try and like catch up later. And I, to me, this is getting, would be getting ahead of it because it's not going to get less busy.
Well, and the other issue is, is that if, if, let's say I want my vehicle to somebody and they park there and then they get signed, I get the ticket because of the biggest advantage.
It's the same as if they parked it overnight.
But I know, but, but if they're parked at night, then their vehicle gets towed. Then they have to deal with the tow truck company as far as getting their vehicle back or whatever costs that, that costs them to get it back from them. It takes us out of the whole equation. Other than just, hey, on the front of the sign that says, you can't park here overnight, your vehicle is towed.
So, on the, on the hours, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm on the fence about that. I mean, I might want to go downtown and go to a concert that's in one of those buildings downtown. Sometimes that happens. And I might be there longer than two hours.
Can you just park, where are you allowed to park for longer than two hours?
Yeah, I guess so, but...
Why don't we just, I'll go up and take a little extra look at it and come back to the better.
Do we want to table this and take our, take our...
I'm going to table it.
Okay, we've got a, um, want to discuss it next week, I mean, next agenda, okay. And that was Commissioner Brown. So, we're going to table this to the September agenda. And that's a motion by Commissioner Allen and second by Commissioner Brown. Is there any other discussion?
I just want to say, I think that the map that Commissioner Brown made does outline the areas that we need to address.
The problem areas.
And we maybe just, we need to point out that this is no overnight and, and these may be truck, no, or vehicle-only. Business district, but I think that she does address the area that we were...
It's at least highlighted there for us to see, and this is, that this is, are the areas of concern. Okay. All right, well, thank you. Okay, so, um, any other discussion? Yes?
If you're going to amend the ordinance to remove the time limit, how, how, does that take a couple of meetings? I mean, how long does that take? Because now it's out there that, that they have this one-hour thing, I mean, so there's going to be an issue. I would think some people are going to still have an issue with, you know, calling the chief about that one hour since they're known now, so how long does that take to do that, to get that off of there if you decide to do that?
Would you rescind that one? Does that take two meetings to rescind?
It'd be the same as amending, but the thing is, it's, it's a matter of, I don't want to recommend not enforcing. I mean, I think we have enforcement priorities, the chief will take that into consideration. People calling and complaining, I understand the reason for it, but this hasn't been an issue until, well, that doesn't, doesn't matter. But yeah, I, I hear what Mr. Chris offers insane, but I don't think, um, I think we've tabled it to next meeting. I don't think there's an issue. I mean, being, obviously due to the call, but then the police will handle it accordingly as they...
But if we decide we don't want a one-hour and we go to a two-hour, will that, that would be an ordinance amendment requiring a public hearing?
Yes.
What if we decide...
And to revoke it, it would, it would, we'd get rid of, it would be the same, we have to, it's almost the same as...
Revoke would be a, a first, second hearing?
Yep.
Okay.
We would repeal it.
Three months.
Okay, repeal. All right, um, okay, so, all those in favor of tabling until next September agenda?
All right.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries, all right, now we're going to have a long September meeting as well.
Bring it snacks.
Okay. So, the final...
We start at four-thirty.
Yeah, we started at four-thirty today already. The, uh, final, um, item under Old Business is a discussion of possible action regarding expansion of the Evergreen Cemetery and development options. And so, first, we, uh, learned last month that the, uh, land that we were really anxious to expand on is, uh, not suitable for traditional cemetery use. Uh, six acres, I believe it was five point nine five acres donated by school board. And, uh, so, um, I would ask, uh, Mr. Hartman, is it, do we need to, and we just received this land. We ju, I mean, I don't know if the deed is signed or not, you know, I don't know anything about that. And do we need to have a courtesy and notify the school board in some formal way?
Yes, so, the, the deed has been recorded, so the property is transferred to us. There is an issue with the legal description, surveyor is still working on that. Um, but that's sort of not relevant to, to this issue. And I have talked to a couple of commissioners there about, um, about, about just that, that we've had, we have some other ideas of the directions we go in, but because the school board donated that property, do we as a courtesy, and this, there's no legal requirement, but as a courtesy, obviously, for a continuing relationship with them, offer it back if we're not going to use it, right? For a purpose of a cemetery.
I'd like to speak to that.
Okay.
Unofficially, I've taken that step. I've talked to the superintendent and some school board members. And the superintendent has discussed it with each of the members of the school board. And they're still happy with us keeping the property. And wish us well and hope that we can benefit from it. And that was an unofficial, uh, and I made that understood to them, that was not official. Action from the entire city board, that was just me covering.
Well, I, I believe that we would, you know, we know, um, we know, I, I'm going to go ahead and say, I've been approached, really pushed, uh, someone wants to trade that property already and the deed's not even signed. And I think Commissioner Melander may have been approached, I don't know. But I feel like we need to officially notify the school board and let them officially send us a note back or something and say, you know, best of luck with it, you know, whatever. So that we're not accused of already trading or selling property that they have kindly, graciously donated to us to use for cemetery.
It's just occurred to me, and maybe this is the way to handle it, is I, we need to get that legal description straightened out. If, if we're deeding it back, we don't. If we're going to end up keeping it, which it sounds like that's where this is headed, then we do. And so, they're going to have to sign a corrective deed on the legal description. And what I can do is, um, I'll certainly talk to their attorney and let me work on that. Meaning, I'll work on the corrective deed and I will make it clear, I'll mention the conversation, the informal conversation, I'll mention that it came up at this meeting and that if they could, um, but I'll just make the same offer that was, that was made by or talked about with Commissioner Melander. And I'll get something in writing from them, which in addition to the corrective deed, that says they understand that we may not be using the property for cemetery and that, you know, good luck with the property.
Free and clear.
Free and clear.
And it has no covenances on it?
It hasn't, none of that now, so, yeah, I would expect it, but I'll make sure.
Okay, that's good.
Covered on that.
All right, so that's, um, and so Courtney has drawn out, I think we gave, best of my memory, gave, we read in principle to give Courtney direction to go ahead and order a survey of some city-owned property, uh, northwest of the cemetery at this time. For those who don't know, how many plots do we have left? Three, five, or something like that?
I think it's twenty altogether, but they're, they're doubles, so maybe ten or...
That are available to buy?
Eighteen, something, not many. And that's the time when people come in and buy, they don't buy the single plot, they're buying a double or they're buying enough for their family's sake. They're going quick.
Usually four, six at a time because they want, they, you know, rent for everybody.
So, had, did you, did you then go ahead and order a term to come?
And this is what we have ordered, a survey on.
A red?
Yes, the city already owns this park. We don't own this lot here, but it looks like it's mainly inside the pond. But this is a city street that we can close, and then this is a city street that we can close. And we already own that lot there. And that's, gives us a pretty good start.
Do you know about like how many acres it is roughly? But that's a good amount.
Yeah, that's a good start there now, um, and he's surveying that portion of the city street, but of course, that would have to be abandoned by proper procedures because it is a city-owned street. Uh, the alleyway, what about that alleyway there? Um, because it's going, if, if the cemetery went on out there to, that's Avenue B, I mean, excuse me, First Street?
This would be the alley.
That's Avenue, yeah.
Okay, but what about over here? What's on this far east side, west side, excuse me?
This is an alley.
Right, and that's First Street?
This is a red.
Second Street, second Street, that's a dirt road.
And the other one is Third Street, it's just not cut through.
Okay, so what, the alley then, would we have to abandon that portion of the alley or, okay?
The alley and the road.
All right.
So, the property on the right at the side there that exists in cemetery property?
This is what's already existing.
And then that's the pond next to it.
Mm-hmm. Do we, do we think we need a geotechnical?
It's pretty high. I, what, we've talked to Commissioner Melander about this. It's having someone come in and maybe just mulch out a trail so we can see what's back there.
Yeah.
For now, because I think he tried to go out and walk it, but it's very thick.
I did.
Well, what do you think about that?
Uh, that's what I was, was thinking, that, that we spend a few hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And hire a contractor with a mulcher to put us some trails in there and stay well clear of where the property lines are.
Mm-hmm.
And just put us some trails through there where we can get in there and see what we have.
Well, they should be marked once we get the survey.
Well, yeah, but I was like, before we get the survey, I was hoping, and I don't know, has the chairman given you an idea about what the timing was on the term of the survey?
No, I don't know. Reach out to him.
Yeah, I was hoping we could go ahead and put someone in there and get some trails up and down where we'd know.
If we could, I mean, I'm okay with that, if we can stay off the, you know, property line.
That's right.
Um, and, and they do that a lot on, on wooded lots that are for sale. They just go in there, trail blaze in the middle of the, of the lot. Uh, and I'll remind you that we do have, we have funding for that, we have five thousand dollars in the cemetery reserve. I'll go over again, and we've got, uh, the CARES Act cemetery line item still has sixteen thousand dollars in it. And then there's three thousand dollars that is allocated, I think, in the, or about sixteen still that's unallocated in the CARES Act that we could, we could put towards the cemetery. And we, we're certainly going to put, I know we all agreed in principle to put money out of the American Rescue Plan Act funding towards a cemetery. So, we've got funding for that. We can, should, should we, I mean, the geotechnical takes time as well. And should we go ahead and order that?
I, I think it's wise.
Okay.
I mean, I know it's on the hill.
But it does go down.
It does go down.
In certain places.
I think it would be a smart, smart thing to do.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the, uh, city administrator to expend up to seven hundred and fifty bucks for the contractor to just put us some trails in there where we can get in there and see what we have. May not take that much, but give her a little leeway.
So, that's back to Commissioner Melander, it's getting late for this old lady. And second back to Commissioner Brown.
Did it come back more than that there?
I, I, you see, the motion's already been made and now we could, we could amend the motion because I, I don't think, but anyway, we've got the motion back from Commissioner Miller, second back from Commissioner Brown, discussion. I don't think seven hundred and fifty dollars, I'm afraid that might not be enough.
It wouldn't be to clear the property.
No, but just a trail blaze, I just don't think, because they'll be, you know, they got a trip charge, a cost for them to come out and...
Well, a local contractor, there's a couple of local contractors around here that have those small mulching machines.
They'll eat anything, yeah.
My husband has one.
And two, your husband?
Yeah, he does.
Well, Greg can do it.
Well, mine's not that big.
He's done a lot of volunteer work for this.
But anyway, they, the, there's companies that have those small mulching machines and I had a talk with them recently, know what their hourly rates are, but a couple of hours in there should be able to open up enough trails for us.
Probably could do that.
Halfway till what we can see.
Put the, the thing back up, the map back up there, Ms. Courtney, thank you.
And if you want to spend more money on it, because it's going to have to be cleared anyway if we're utilizing.
But I, that's what I would do. I would like to come down off of Gray Avenue, come on down to where they think that, uh, the road is there. Is that B? That's Avenue B there, isn't it? Uh, yes, it is Avenue B, that's Avenue C. Come on down and try to go on Avenue B some and maybe up a little bit in that one, that one lot up there.
That's right.
Um, eventually, I think as a courtesy, we need to notify the property owners if it looks like we're really going to move forward with this, that the adjacent property owners will, might have to consider a, a privacy fence along that way to make the cemetery nice.
Sure. Yeah.
Because we want, we want it to be nice, um...
When we, when we get a good look at it, we may even consider a wooded buffer.
Uh, yeah, if we have enough room.
That's right.
If we have enough room.
I'd suggest making the road follow the pond too, because it's going to be wet down there. I mean, you might not be able to plant too many close to the water, so.
Just to get somebody... These should be, these should be sixty, that ain't going to play right, and this one as well, so. And this should be sixty-three. So, that'd give you an idea of how much.
But I think, I think Greg was talking about making the access road down, follow the pond.
Right.
If it gets flooded, it won't be, you know, people won't flood around or anything when the road gets flooded, so.
Okay, I don't want people flooding.
No, we don't want people to flood. And so, and the other cemetery, the other land, you know, you, we had discussed briefly about a musulam and that might be something that we could do.
And I think that's one Russell's...
Russell's got some information.
Sometime in the future, just even a small one that holds, you know, two, three hun, four, I don't know. You know, that's a lot of people though, four hundred. A hundred would be...
That'd be the Melander family.
Well, you'd be along, you'd be hard pressed to get them in a hundred.
Okay, so, um, if you, I think you can just go ahead and skip to the third slide. Yeah, all right, so we just looked at a couple of options, like above ground, a small individual musulam, like one, one crypt that's about seventeen thousand, a double would be, a double stack would be twenty-five thousand, it's a pretty, pretty significant.
Is that a single or no?
That's a double, so it's a pretty significant cost.
So, it's leap and double and a single?
No. Yes. And that's just a crypt. I mean, it's like a leering, it's not... And then option B, we looked at columbaria, which, that's just for holding ashes.
Well, I was thinking...
Okay, so there, those are, um, those are, they hold ashes, they're, and there, there's a lot of variations here that you, you can do. That one in the top left is forty-five hundred dollars and it, it's got forty-eight units, niches, niches they're, they call it. So, a typical niche would sell for three hundred dollars. So, um, you, the city would expend money for the columbaria, sell it for forty-five hundred dollars, sell each spot, each niche for three hundred dollars. Um, that's, uh, fourteen thousand four hundred in revenue, so you got a net of ninety-nine hundred dollars. It, it's just, just a...
And how many does that hold? I mean, could...
The, the top one there is forty-eight.
Uh-huh, so people could actually buy one unit for their whole family or something like that if they wanted to.
That's what I was picturing when we were talking about this.
And then there, there's all kinds of options out there. The one in the top right is, you know, that's a ground level type, style unit.
One on the top left is very similar to the one out north of Tallahassee.
Yeah, that's right.
Metalwood or Meadowbrook, yeah.
On Timberlake.
On Timberlake, that's great.
But I think a lot, most people choose cremation because of the cost. So, I think that's the, you know, the...
It's only three hundred dollars.
Right, that's what I'm saying, if you, the other stuff, the other one, you know.
Yeah, that's...
They don't choose it because, I mean, most of them, it's the cost.
Now, are the people that are, that are buying plots, are they being cremated in? Now, are the people that are, that are buying plots, are they being cremated and being put in, in those plots? Or, I mean, that wouldn't really make a lot of sense.
Not most of them, most of them are traditional.
Most of them are traditional buried.
Now, are you okay, Mr. Adlerstein?
I'm okay.
You're not gonna put my last quote in there in the paper, okay?
You already asked.
Well, I was thinking about, if we had a, if we, but I'm sure it's expensive, a muslin that held, you know, several, you know.
Yeah, okay, right, now those, yeah, I did look at those. Those are really expensive. Let's see, I think a thirty-two crypt, one is, is like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Oh my goodness.
I think, I think the cheapest one I saw was about a hundred and fifty thousand.
What cost the little?
Well, what's the revenue look like on that?
Yeah, that's a good question. I didn't, I didn't look into that. I don't have.
Well, I mean, the return on the investment, I mean, are we getting into the cemetery business or whatever? But the little, the little niche thing, that's, that's a good idea. I, I like that.
The maintenance, I mean, that's the other thing. I mean, the city does, we have, my understanding, I've seen this in other jurisdictions, but the city has to do the maintenance essentially forever, right? I mean, it falls on us. Some of the folks will keep up their own, but we have to do it forever. And you talk about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar crypt, which I know is probably not even an option. I mean, I can't imagine like re-roofing it and doing this and doing that. I mean, it would be like a small house that we would have to take care of.
And you'd have to light it around it and maybe a bench.
Your sunk cost, I mean, and whereas, obviously, because I brought it up, I know it's not popular, but the columbaria, that's the easiest, right? I mean, you would crush, rush them down and mow between them and pave or whatever.
And we do have a lot of people in the area are, are cremated because of the cost of a regular traditional burial.
And that, to me, that's interesting, is one of the columbaries is very interesting because I, I, I believe it'd be utilized. And it's, it's within, the, the cost of it is with, within reason that we might be able to do and just start it and see how it goes.
There's appetite for it.
Yes, see how it goes, yes.
You could just, like you're saying, put it on the new area, we're talking about opening up, just put a little section for that.
Yeah, I was about to say, we might be able to find a space to put one in the, in the old area even. And do that and start out even. So, and, and you know, we did talk about, we all like a gazebo and that's something that we can, you know, maybe, see if we've got enough land to, to do that, a nice gazebo to hold the services in and out of the bad weather, hot sun, whatever.
I think we have some good options here.
Okay.
One of those are three hundred and eighty dollars.
Yeah, all right, so, is this another item then that we'll be tabling until we find out? How about we table it until we get?
Do we wanna do the trail?
Oh, oh, trail, yes, we've got that. Thank you for reminding me. We were in discussion, we're in discussion, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Greg, you think that's a, that's that?
Well, if you're talking about just like a walking trail, like a, like a walking path, are you talking about that big machine that, you know, eats up trees practically?
That big machine, Greg, if you and I are on the same page, he's not gonna make anything but a walking trail.
Yeah.
It's only six foot wide.
Yeah.
And that's the cutter head size.
Yeah.
Five and a half to six foot, and that's basically what he's gonna do. Not ask him to cut down any large trees, just to cut down the brush and leave the large trees.
Go around the tree.
And make some paths through there where we can see what we have. Courtney, are you satisfied with that?
I don't know, how much it costs, I'll ask them.
I'll guess, I'll guess probably about one fifty, two hundred an hour. That's guessing.
I mean, I'll get some prices.
Okay, well, we've got a motion to let her go ahead and get that done, up to seven hundred and fifty dollars. So if, if.
If it doesn't work, we can figure it out.
Yeah, or let, if they, if it costs more, tell them to do seven hundred and fifty dollars worth.
And then stop.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, you know, we can change that figure. That was just a guess of mine right now. I don't have anything to base it on. But if you, if you guys are more comfortable with adding more money to it, I'll modify my motion.
Well, then, I would say a thousand dollars.
Do a thousand. I'll, I'll modify my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, you're gonna go, this is not the correct way to do the agenda, I mean, the.
But he's late.
What you call it, amend a motion, amend a motion.
You're following.
I know it. So he's, he's changing it to a thousand dollars and that's, and Commissioner Brown agrees to it. Is that all right with you all? Okay, so that's Commissioner Melander and Commissioner Brown, a thousand dollars to trail blaze. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries. What, we'll have it, this, we're gonna get a trail blaze so we can all take a walk on there if we want to. Meanwhile, we'll wait till we get the survey back and, and we'll put it back on the agenda when we have the survey. Is that all right with you all?
Yeah.
Okay, all right then.
Somebody channel Mr. Mathis.
I beg your, I know.
Someone channel Mr. Mathis for us.
So, whatever. Personally, I had dedicated this meeting to Mr. Mathis because he does not like long meetings. Okay, so we have a, yes, do we have a second?
Wait, we already got a motion of a second over here.
Okay, I didn't hear Melander. All right, and that motion is by Commissioner Walden, second by Commissioner Melander. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? And that motion carries.